Excellent. Thank you, Mr. Andy Port, our, our planning director. And ladies and gentlemen, good evening and welcome to the Newburyport, City of Newburyport Zoning Board of Appeals for the meeting of March 23rd, 2021. My name is Rob Champetti. I'm the chairman. I'll begin by introducing the members of our board and those in attendance as panelists, and then I'll go over kind of the rules of the road a bit. And we will begin by a roll call, establish a quorum, determine who will be the voting, the five voting members of each hearing, and then we'll go on to the public hearing. The public hearings based on the, the meeting agenda that's published this evening. We'll start by two motions to continue and get those out of the way. In the event that any folks are here this evening as attendees waiting to speak in connection with any of those applications so that you don't have to, to wait till it comes up to learn that it's not going forward. So with, without further ado, we'll, we'll begin this evening with a quick introduction of those in attendance. This evening, members of the zoning board of appeals, we have Mr. Mark Moore, our vice chair, Mr. Stephen Delisle, our secretary, Mr. Ken Swanton, zoning board member, Mr. Walter Shannon, member, and Mr. Greg Grebe Bennett, associate member. My name again is Rob Champetti, and I'm the chair. Also this evening, you'll see as members of the panel, we have Caitlin Sullivan, our city planner, as well as Mr. Andy Port, our planning director. And then finally, Ms. Gretchen Joy, who is our, our very patient keeper of the record. She, Gretchen will be taking minutes and notes this evening. So I will say for all of those of you who wish to speak in connection with any application, when you do so, just please make sure to give your first and last name and your address. And I'll remind you of that as we go through sort of the rules of the road of how things will go forward. So we'll begin by a roll call and just for those of you that might not be familiar with how the ZBA works. Like most boards and commissions, we are a volunteer board of, of appointees that we, in order to establish a quorum, in, in this case, we have to have at least four members of the ZBA in attendance in order to have a quorum. We will establish five voting members for each application. And we do have associate member, Mr. Gregory Bennet, who will be stepping up in a few instances to be the voting member. If there are any members who have to recuse themselves. So beginning with the public hearings, before we jump into the public hearings, I like to just go over very briefly what's involved in the ZBA and sort of how we, how we flow and how the meetings are run. So that those of you that are listening can, can, can sort of plan your time accordingly. So with every ZBA meeting, we will start by calling the, when we, when we enter the public hearings, we'll start by announcing the name of the public hearing by, of course, its published name, which is usually the name of the applicant or the owner. And of course, the address. In addition to that, we'll also read the, the docket number, which is its application number, as well as the relief being sought, whether it's an appeal or a dimensional variance or a variance or a special permit, et cetera. All of that will be read. And then a brief description of exactly what, what specifically that, that matter is. So if it's, if on the agenda, it says a, you know, to construct a fence or to add a some room, something like that, which is a descriptor, will be read as well. After that, we will go into the actual public hearing. And the first, what we do first is we will ask to hear from the applicant. That's typically when the applicant will present the application to the board. The application can be presented by either the applicant or the applicant's representative, attorney, architect, engineer, or all of the above. At the, at the conclusion of that, and I will sort of run, sort of run as moderator of, of that portion and all of the portions of the public hearings. As soon as the applicant has completed the application's presentation, we'll then close that portion of the public hearing, at which point we will go to the public comment section. You'll see that Mr. Port has put up the instructions for public comment. We ask that every member of the public, please kindly keep your comments to, to under two minutes or so, just out of respect and courtesy to all of those that may wish to speak. You know, there's no hard and fast rule, although I do keep general time. And I will, as courteously as possible, let you know when, when you're running sort of up, up against that, that outward boundary of that time limit, we'll ask you to kind of wrap, wrap things up. We also will ask you to please give your first and last name and your address so that Ms. Joy can record that for the minutes. At the expiration of, and if you're going to speak in either support or opposition, don't feel as though you need to wait for, you know, a certain segment of the, of the hearing. There is no, you know, those that wish to speak in favor, those that wish to speak in opposition. It's just simply those who wish to speak. And if you're not sure, or if you're pro or con, don't worry about where you fall in the order, just simply raise your hand by clicking the bottom right of your Zoom screen, and you'll see the bottom right, there's a little icon of a hand. Just click to raise your hand. We'll notice that and Mr. Port, as the moderator, will unmute your mic. We'll ask you to then click on the bottom left of your screen where you see the microphone icon and make sure that there's no red line through it so that your microphone shows the color green. That's how you know that we'll all, we're all able to hear you. And if not, we'll let you know. After you speak and, and have your, your time sort of and comments, we will then, when we go through all of the raised hands, we'll then close that portion of the public hearing. And we will go to a segment of the hearing called Questions from the Board. This is when members of the ZBA will oftentimes adapt questions they may have heard in the public comment section. There will be questions of their own sort of initiation. There'll be other questions that will come up just as a, a matter of course. And this is when the ZBA will ask questions of either the applicant or the applicant's representatives. At the conclusion of that, we will then close that portion of the public hearing and go to the final portion of the public hearing, which is called deliberations. In deliberations, this is when the ZBA will, will deliberate the, the legal merits of the application as well as the criteria. We do so without any additional public comment or any additional input from the applicants, unless of course, we ask for it. It's essentially when members of the public and those, both applicants and all of those in attendance get to hear the members of the ZBA think out loud. It's a process by which you sort of observe the sausage making process as it, as it unfolds, you know, for better or for worse. And, and so we will, we will deliberate the, the merits by basis of the criteria of what's being sought, and we will discuss it. And we may come up with additional questions, in which case we'll ask those questions. And then, once the ZBA has gone through that portion of the deliberation segment, we will then, I will then close that portion of the final segment of the zoning board hearing process, at which point we will then go to the voting section. And under the Roberts Rules of Order, you will hear me entertain a motion from the, any of the members of the ZBA. And under the Roberts Rules of Order, you'll hear a motion being made in the affirmative. That's just simply an adherence of the Roberts Rules and motion in order to advance an application to the next and final step. You'll hear a motion to approve being, being volleyed by one of the members. That motion must be seconded. Please know that a motion to approve does not suggest that that member will support the application or plans to vote in, in support of the application. It's just merely a procedural mechanism by which that application is brought to the next and final stage. When a motion is made to approve and then that motion is seconded, that's when we will call the roll, and I will then call the roll based on the voting members of the ZBA. In order to be successful, an application must be met with four votes in the affirmative. There are five voting members, so that means four must vote yes in order for the application to pass. If the application passes, the motion carries and that, that application's approved. There's then a 20-day appeal period and Mr. Port and, and Ms. Sullivan in the planning office can give you additional information on, on the, you know, the details of that. But that's essentially the flow of, of the ZBA, and that's, that's how each of our hearings will work this evening. So without further ado, I'm going to go through the first two matters that are on our docket that we've received motions to continue. We'll then go through a quick vote to accept the continuance of those matters, and then we'll get into the, the meat and potatoes of the, the applications that are going forward on their merits. And the first one in that pecking order will be 61 Purchase Street in just a moment. But before we do, we will deal with 193 High Street. That's the first matter on the public hearing. It's Hebbelick Real Estate LLC care of attorney Lisa Mead, Mead Tellerman and Costa LLC. And it's an appeal, docket 2019-042, an appeal of notice of violation from the zoning enforcement officer dated May 16th, 2019. Attorney Mead, do you wish to be heard, or would you like us to just vote on the request?
I, I would just like the board to vote on a request to continue to December 14th, 2021. And just as an explanation, Mr. Chair, there is a trial that's now scheduled in November that's related to this matter, hence the request for the continuance to that late date.
Okay, thank you, Attorney Mead. And so with, with that information, members of the ZBA, do we have a motion to continue the matter as requested to the date, sort of a placeholder date, pending the, the, the advancement of litigation resolution to the date of December 14th, 2021?
Excuse me, Mr. Chair, just a point of order. I don't believe we did roll to establish.
Oh, my apologies. You know, you're right. Let's, let's, let's take a quick pause and we will just call our roll. And thank you for pointing that out. Sometimes I get ahead of myself. So to, to, to establish who's here and who's voting, we'll quickly take roll. And then I'll just go through who the voting members are. Calling roll of the Newburyport Zoning Board of Appeals for the hearing of March 23rd, 2021. Mr. Mark Moore.
Here.
Mr. Stephen Delisle.
Here.
Mr. Ken Swanton.
Here.
Mr. Walter Chen.
Here.
And Mr. Gregory Bennet.
Yes, present.
And Rob Champetti, I am here as well. We have six members of the ZBA present, our voting members for the, I'll, I'll just, I'll make sure I let everyone know who our voting members are for any application that has recusals. But on the, on the matter of the continuance, the voting members will be myself, Mr. Moore, Mr. Delisle, Mr. Swanton, and Mr. Shannon. Those are the five voting members on 193 High Street.
Mr. Mr. Chairman, this is Mr. Delisle. I, I need to recuse myself from 193 High Street.
Thank you, Mr. Delisle, and I do, do see that note as well. The voting members on 193 High Street therefore will be myself, Mr. Champetti, Mr. Moore, Mr. Swanton, Mr. Shannon, and Mr. Bennet. With Mr. Delisle having recused himself. Okay, so, and thank you, Mr. Moore, for pointing that out. Now that we've got ourselves caught up, I believe we, I left off with, with entertaining a motion to continue from members of the ZBA.
Mr. Chair, it's Mr. Moore. I will move to continue 193 High Street Appeal 2019-042 to December 14th, 2021.
I'll second it, Ken Swanton.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Moore, and thank you, Mr. Swanton. Motion's made by Mr. Moore and seconded by Mr. Swanton. Calling the roll, Mr. Moore.
Yes.
Mr. Swanton.
Yes.
Mr. Shannon. Yes. Mr. Bennet.
Yes.
Rob Champetti, I vote yes. That's five in the affirmative. The eyes have it, the motion carries, the matter's continued to the meeting of 1214, 2021. Thank you, gentlemen. So the next matter that is, that we've received a request to continue is the matter of 65 Curzon Mill Road, Brendan Johnson and Christina Krill Johnson, 2021-06 Dimensional Variants to Construct a New Two-Story Garage and Master Bedroom Edition, Creating a New Sideyard Non-Conformity. The applicant has requested a continuance to the hearing of April 27th. Do we have a motion?
This is Ken Swanton. I'll make a motion to continue the variance application for 65 Curzon Mill Road, which is docket number 2021-06 to April. I'm sorry, what was the date they asked for?
April 27th.
April 27th, 21.
And for the record, and thank you, Mr. Swanton, for the record, Mr. Moore has recused himself from this application. So the voting members will be myself, Mr. Champetti, Mr. Delisle, Mr. Swanton, Mr. Shannon, and Mr. Bennet with the recusal of Mr. Moore. Having entertained a motion by Mr. Delisle to continue, do we have a second?
Mr. Swanton, actually.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Swanton.
This is Mr. Delisle. I'll second it.
Mr. Motion's made by Mr. Swanton, seconded by Mr. Delisle. I'll call the roll. Mr. Delisle.
Yes.
Mr. Swanton.
Yes.
Mr. Shannon.
Yes.
Mr. Bennet.
Yes.
And Rob Champetti, I vote yes. The eyes have it, the motion carries. Matters continue to 427, 2021. Thank you, gentlemen. So the first matter that we will actually go forward with substantively on our agenda tonight is the application of Windward Shaw LLC care of Lisa Mead, Attorney Lisa Mead, Mead Tellerman and Costa LLC for the property address of 61 Purchase Street, docket 2021-05. This is a dimensional variance to construct a pool within the required front yard setback. May we hear from the applicant attorney me?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair and members of the board. Lisa Mead, Mead Tellerman Costa, 30 Green Street in the report. On behalf of Windward Shaw LLC, who is the contractor for the owners of the property, Ashley and Sarah Golden at 61 Purchase Street. We're here this evening for a variance for the location of a pool in the secondary front yard setback along Neptune Street and the fence, which is on a corner lot, which is under section 6J of the dimensional requirements under the ordinance. If you go to the next slide, please. So the ZBA last year granted a special permit for renovation of the main structure on the lot. And no modifications are proposed with this application to that structure. Structure is just about done. The landscaping, whatnot, of course, are not yet done, nor are the, the sidewalks. But that project is starting to wrap up, which is pretty exciting. The property is located in the R2 zoning district and currently it has a minimum lot size requirement of 10,000 square feet, and the property contains 7,102 square feet. The property includes 168.14 feet of frontage on Purchase Street, where the primary front yard is Purchase Street and where overall 90 feet are required. The proposal is to put a small, construct a small pool on the westerly side of the existing structure because there is a, has two front yards, that being Neptune Street and Purchase Street. The secondary front yard is off of Neptune Street, which would require a 25-foot setback. If you could go to the next slide, please. And so you can he, see in this site plan, these are the proposed conditions. The, if this were a typical side yard, of course, the pool would be permitted to be within six feet of the side yard. But here it's 15 feet is what we're proposing. The requirement would be 25 feet, as you can see, we have from the, the front yard, which is Purchase Street. The, additionally, the applicant proposes to reconstruct the fence, which currently exists along the property as a six-foot tall fence in the same location. And I'll talk about that in a little bit. What I'd like to do first is go over the conditions and related to the pool, the variance criteria related to the pool. So with this particular lot, you can see a little bit here with the topography that's on this, this slide, but I'm going to show you a photo. The lot is unique in that the rear northwest corner of the lot, the topography first drops down and then substantially rises in the last four or five feet of the back edge of the property. And I'll show you a little bit. So you can see with the topo on this lot, that up along Purchase Street, you see that topo line at 24. And then you see the lot goes down two feet over that run to 22 in the back. And you see how that topo line edges off. That's because in that back corner, the lot rises. And if you could go to the next slide, Andy. It's hard to see from this, but this is the lot overall. But in the next slide down, you can't really see the topo in this one, but you can see some planting in that back corner. In the next slide down, I have a photo, which you can see the fence lines, you see how that fence goes up to the corner. So there, the edge of the property in that back corner rises to the back, which is unique. Most of the lots in the area are flat and of general same topography. But in this instance, that back corner goes up towards the, the topography in the back rises. So the applicant would like to, as I said, place a small plunge pool as close as it's possible without violating that front yard, but staying as farther away as possible of the side yard. And because of that unusual dip, we're trying not to have to excavate that whole area as part of this construction. The location is far away from the back corner. If you go back to the site plan, Andy. The location is as far away from the back corner and the line shared with Neptune that is practical, while still trying to meet that secondary front yard requirement of 15 feet. Further, the proposed changes won't be detrimental to the neighborhood as there's no negative impact on any of the neighbors as a result of granting the variance. The property is surrounded on two sides by the city street. And then the pool is over 30 feet from the rear line, which exceeds, of course, the setback. And of course, the houses in between the pool and then the neighbor to the east. So as to the pool location, the applicant and the owners believe the board can find that it meets the requirements stated for the variance. As to the fence, so Andy, if you could go down to slide seven, I think. So something that we don't see often in the City of Newport is actually the implementation of section 6J called the Traffic Visibility Cross Across Corners. Technically, the city has this dimensional requirement that if you have a house on a corner and you want to put a fence up, that you need to have it set back by a certain triangulation, which is represented in this drawing by the engineer, so that folks who are approaching on a side street don't have to eke out and get hit by fast-moving cars that may be on a main street. Of course, that's a little different situation here, given the South End and Neptune and Purchase Street. So if you go into the next slide, please, Andy, actually slide nine would be great. So here's a 2012 condition of the fence. And you can see where it's located at the corner of the property line, but with fairly wide sidewalks on Purchase Street. The proposals to replace this fence with a six-foot fence at the same location. Because the purpose of the ordinance is to kind of prevent people from inching up where fast-moving traffic is going in another direction and preventing visibility, that actually doesn't happen in this case. Anyone driving up Neptune Street by necessity, not because of the fence, will need to go beyond the exact corner, given the parking on both sides in order to see the traffic. I'd refer the board at this time to the letter from John Eric White, the city's engineer, as well as the engineer for the applicant, who, Mr. White says that here the traffic is going to be stopped to inch out, but not because of oncoming traffic, but because of the dense neighborhood and in the parking of the cars that usually exist along this corner. In, in our instance, the South End is replete with fences on corners and locations of fences, that this is not unique to this particular neighborhood. So if you can go to the next photo, please. So here's an example of the same thing at Barton and Barton Court, and the next photo. Barton and High Street, of course, that's actually, High Street actually has a little higher rate of speed. Next photo. Lunt and Hancock Street example. Next photo. Orange and Federal Street. Next photo, please. And Prospect and Lime. So as you can see, if you can go back up to the slide seven, please. The, what we are requesting would not be a special privilege granted to this particular property. In fact, the fences existed for quite some time, as noted in the report from the city's, city's peer review engineer. The situation that's eking up to the cross street here isn't as a result of the fence, but as a result of the conditions in the South End. There wouldn't be any derogation to purpose and ten of the ordinance, which is to prevent blind spots at corners that face fast-moving traffic, because that doesn't exist here. Any traffic issues at the corner are a result of the layout of parking and existing sidewalk and street intersection. And as I showed in that earlier photograph, you can see how wide the sidewalk is for Purchase Street in that location. Allowing the fence to stay in the same location, the status quo will not cause harm to the public good. And as you can see from the photos that I showed you, it wouldn't be a special privilege to the applicant to allow the fence to stay in the same location. With that, the applicant requests the board grant a variance to allow the pool to be at 15 feet from the side yard, which is actually the secondary front yard, and to allow the fence to be replaced in the same location at the corner of the lot. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Attorney Mead. We can go ahead and close that portion of the public hearing, which is the presentation portion, and go to the public comment section. And Andy, if we can go ahead and thank you. As you guys, as folks can see, the instructions for public comment are just as described. We ask that you keep any comments to within two minutes. And just please give your first and last name and address for our keeper of the record, Ms. Gretchen Joy. So with that, I see, Andy, it looks like we have a hand up by Ms. Mary Ann McCauley, if you wouldn't mind unmuting your mic. Ms. McCauley, you, you'll want to make sure that you unmute your mic in the bottom left of your Zoom screen, and you have the floor.
Hi, I'm here to voice my concerns on three issues. And you'll have to guide me and let me know if this is the right forum to address two of them.
If I can interrupt you, if I could just ask you to give your, your, I know, we know your name, but of course, be just your address for our.
Oh, sure. Certainly. I'm Mary Ann McCauley, and I live at 25 Madison Street, diagonally across from 61 Purchase Street.
Thank you.
And so my first concern is the installation of a pool. This is, represents a resumption of construction noise. Last summer was particularly challenging for the abutters of 61 Purchase Street. The demolition of that home and construction of the present house involve noise, dust, truck traffic. I learned that there is something a thousand times worse than chalk on a blackboard. It's the sound of shingles being ripped from a facade beginning at 7:00 AM and continuing for three days. The sound of cement trucks, the drivers had to be repeatedly reminded to turn off their engines. The excavation and drilling in the street during heat waves, the beeping of dump trucks at 6:00 AM. This is normally a very quiet street. The noise level proved particularly challenging during COVID, when many of us could not escape even if we wanted to. I know that I was not the only one to call City Hall to complain. Consequently, I do not look forward to a resumption of truck traffic, excavation and cement truck noises for the installation of a pool. But beyond the construction noise, I do not believe that there is sufficient, sufficient space on this property to buffer the noise of pool activities and the associated social gatherings. My bedroom windows are right on Purchase Street. This is a densely settled neighborhood. Noise carries, and I hear it all at night. My two other concerns involve who gets notified about these projects. And I wonder if the zoning board of appeals could notify more than just the direct abutters because we are impacted by noise, dust, and traffic at contract, construction sites. I believe that the implications of plans need to be fully explained to those who are going to be impacted and that a timeline be set for any construction. I think this is particularly crucial at this time as you, the board will be considering development of 21 Hancock Street, which is right around the corner from me. Finally, it's historic preservation. And although the demolition of 61 Purchase Street is a done deal, I'm trying to get an understanding of what constitutes a historical property in Newport. A review of the city's website, website reveals 35, 37, 48, 49, 53, 64, and 66 Purchase Street have all been designated historic properties. And I'm wondering why 61 Purchase Street was not also afforded a historic designate, designation. It's my understanding that the architecture, the year the home was built, but also who lived in these homes are all factors when considering when to designate a property historic. 61 Purchase Street was the home of Emma Andrews. She was a schoolteacher, a champion of literacy, who served as secretary of the South End Reading Room and for whom the Emma Andrews Library was named. We have houses designated historic because a shoemaker lived there, because a grocer lived there. I wonder why Emma Andrews legacy wasn't also afforded historic preservation? My hope is that the demolition of 61 Purchase Street has not set a precedent in this community, that other homes in the neighborhood will be spared demolition and that we can hold on to our history and character and be spared the noise. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McCauley, for your comments. Anyone else wish to speak in connection with this application? Just please identify yourself by raising your hand and we will, we will acknowledge you. I see a hand raised by, looks like Mr. Andrew Williamson. Andy, if you could unmute Mr. Williamson's mic and Mr. Williamson, if you haven't already, please just unmute your, your zoom screen at the bottom left and you have the floor, sir.
Hello, thank you. My name's Andy Williamson. I live at 78 Purchase Street, which actually is directly across the street from the proposed pool and 61 Purchase Street. I also share concerns about granting this variance. I think when the applicants came for a special permit, the neighborhood was perfectly willing to say, look, you bought a house, you want to enhance it. We don't want to stand in the way of that. As was recently mentioned, the construction process was difficult. I'm in the construction field. I get that construction process can be difficult. I will say that managing the start time in the morning and managing the noise and debris blowing around the neighborhood could have been handled better, but nonetheless, it's not easy to build a house. It's a noisy, messy process. A couple of things, though, that that concerned me. One, actually slide nine that Attorney Mead showed. Showed the planting that was in the yard prior to construction, including the existence of a mature and sort of neighborhood anchor maple tree. That we were informed would be taken down in order to put in a pool. And at the time I didn't realize that a variance was going to be required for the pool. So the fact that the applicants decided to remove.
I'm sorry, Mr. Williamson, it looks like we have lost your audio feed, sir. If you can hear me, we, we can no longer hear you.
I don't know, I don't know that that reflects well on their regard for the neighborhood that they're entering. I would say as far as the application goes, the topography question puzzles me. A two foot change in a lot in the corner of a lot, I'm not really sure how that's relevant to this application. I certainly wouldn't see how it is a hardship. So I'm just a little confused as to the relevance of that. I will say that.
Mr. Williamson, are you there?
Pools by their nature are.
Mr. Williamson. Yes, sorry, this is Andy Port, planning director. I just wanted to interject that we have been losing some of your audio, so we're not hearing everything that you've been saying.
Okay. Thank you. I have a crummy computer and a crummy connection, so I'll continue on, take what you get and we'll hope for the best. Is that okay? Hello.
It works.
Okay, great, thank you. So our bedroom looks right down into this pools by their nature tend to be noisy, happy places. I get that, but it does concern me that with, you know. For the applicants to recognize that that might be the right thing to do. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Williamson. And anyone else who wishes to speak in connection with the application? Let's see, seeing. No hands going once, going twice. All right, I will go ahead and close that portion of the public hearing unless we see any last minute hands. We will then move into the next segment, which is questions from the board. We'll begin by. Let's see, Mr. Moore.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Attorney Mead, I wonder if you could go back or Andy could you find the slide that showed the picture? It looks like it's number five. It did show the topography and the fence. I just had a question on. Thank you. So. It looks like if, and this is just a layman looking at that corner straight on that the the upward slope to the lot happens two fence sections down. So was that roughly 12 feet down? And then with the fence coming towards us in the foreground, is that a newer fence than what was on the slide that showed the, you know, the maple tree and the old fence is part of that fence along the street been replaced?
Mr. Chair, through you. I think the fence drops down at the front. So the, right, so that was the photo you had seen was from 2012, but the fence, I believe, has been replaced with a six foot fence, but it may drop down a little bit, but it is six feet all the way around.
Okay. Thank you, Attorney Mead. And thank you, Mr. Moore. Going on with Mr. Moore, did you have any further questions?
That's it for now.
Okay, great. And thank you, Attorney Mead. Mr. Delisle.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I don't have any questions.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Delisle, Mr. Swanton.
Okay, I've unmuted now. A question came up from one of the people in the hearing about the timeframe of this project. Could, I guess I have a question of what is, if, if the permission was granted for this pool, what is the construction timeframe?
Sure, Mr. Swanton. The contractor, I'm actually getting some of this information remotely, given our current situation. The excavation would be over a period of about two weeks. Then the work following that, I believe the excavation and the concrete would be over a period of about two weeks. And then the work following that would be like a plaster and the pool equipment company coming in. This is what is described as a plunge pool. I am certainly not a pool aficionado, but a plunge pool, meaning that it's a four foot deep pool. This is not a pool that, you know, you have a diving board and all of that kind of thing on truly for, you know, recreation and cooling off kind of activities. So that's the, that's the kind of pool. So the excavation would be much less than a typical larger in-ground pool.
Okay, thank you. I have no other questions at this time.
Okay. Mr., let's see. Mr. Swanton.
Shagnan, Mr. Shagnan.
I'm sorry, thank you. We just heard from Mr. Swanton, Mr. Shannon. Any, any questions from you, sir?
I just had one question for the applicant, was any consideration given to relocating the pool so you didn't impinge on the side yard setback like to the rear of the lot?
Mr. Chagman, yes, there was some consideration given to that, but of course you have the 25 foot rear yard setback as well.
Yeah.
So it's really wouldn't be possible to do it. You can see where if we only moved it back five feet, we still are going to be squeezed.
Yeah, yeah. It is a modest sized pool. I must admit for, for pools, that's, that's not a big pool.
No, it's, it's not. And they, I will tell you that there were several size pools that were considered and the applicants worked really hard to meet both of the front, the primary front yard setback and the rear setback and push it as close as they could to get the 15 feet on Neptune Street.
Thank you, Chair. No other questions.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Shannon. Mr. Bennet.
Yeah, I just wanted to follow up on that. I mean. In locating the pool, I take it, can you just describe for me again, why you could not satisfy the, all of the side and front yard requirements here?
Sure. So there.
Hardship here.
Sure. So there are two front yards on a corner lot, which requires both to have a 25 foot setback. So if you push this pool 25 feet, you're going to be into the window well. If we push it back further, we're going to be into the rear yard setback and we're going to, it's going to cause more excavation in the rear. So that lot, as you could see from that earlier picture on the fence, rises to the rear and to the side by Neptune Street. So it really would cause more excavation. So the location, the pool is really located in the flattest part of the lot, which gives the most setbacks we can possibly give to all of the requirements. So it's really in a location that requires 25, 25 and 25 all around. And hence, if this, if it weren't a corner lot, that pool would be allowed to be over at six feet along that side lot line. And you could flip it and be able to do that, but you, but you can't do that because it's got 25, 25 and 25 because of that condition.
Right. All right, I think that answers my question. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Bennet, and thank you, Attorney Mead. I, I don't have any further questions that haven't already been addressed by my colleagues. So with that, I will close this portion of the public hearing and we will go into the deliberations section. And because this is a variance, our deliberations as members of the ZBA, the ZBA needs to evaluate, determine whether the variance criteria are met, and this is under 10H of our zoning code. In order to find a variance, the ZBA must find the following conditions are present, that the conditions and circumstances are unique to the applicant's lot structure or building and do not apply to the neighboring land structures, buildings in the same district. Two, that the strict, that strict application of the provisions of this chapter would deprive the applicant of reasonable use of the lot, structure or building in a manner equivalent to the use permitted to be made by other owners of their neighboring lands, structures or buildings in the same zoning district. Number three, that the unique conditions and circumstances are not the result of actions of the applicant taken subsequent to the adoption of our zoning here in Newport. And finally, four, that relief, the relief that's being sought of us, we here at the ZBA would not constitute a grant of special privilege inconsistent with the limitations upon other properties within the same zoning district. And I'll also just note that the, the application does not trigger the street, the street tree or sidewalk ordinance. So there's no additional components from DPS. So with that in mind, may we begin deliberations? We'll start with Mr. Moore.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. While I certainly hear and the concern, the noise concerns during the comment section of the hearing and can empathize a bit. As one of the other public commentators mentioned, you know, any kind of construction is noisy and in old dense neighborhoods, it's just, it's just not going to be. No one's going to be happy while it's going on. And unfortunately, the noise levels aren't our purview. What, what are our purview are in judging whether the conditions of variance have been met. And while there are conditions and circumstances unique, there are some topological, topographical, am I saying this right? We had the just challenges to this lot. I, I find, as one of my colleagues said, the size of the pool, the depth of the pool is reasonable. So, you know, with it being a corner lot and having two of the setbacks preserved or adhered to, and then, and then creating as much space with Neptune Street as possible. You know, I find that to be a solid proposal on this. Strict application of this chapter with reasonable use is to have a pool if you have, you know, if you have the space to do it, and this is a reasonably sized pool. And if you do put it in a flat area, I am also a layman on pool installation, but I would say that the less excavation you have to do, the quicker the job will be, which will help with the sound. And the time it would take to do the sound. So. I think reasonable use is to have a pool on your property of reasonable size. The fact that it's a corner lot has nothing to do or is not the fault of the owner that bought this. And we've certainly seen corner lots that needed variances for reasonable proposals in the past. And although there are no precedents set, this would also be a case where you look at and say, we're not granting special privileges as there are pools in dense neighborhoods and there are fences on street corners. And given that our city engineer has said this, it's not a problem, given the fact that Neptune Street is, forces people to be slow and the DPS will look at maybe a stop sign for, for safety. That's not an issue with the fence. So a long way of saying, I think, I think I can support this.
Okay, very good. Thank you, Mr. Moore. Mr. Delisle.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm going to echo Mr. Moore's thoughts. I, you know, I find that the, the corner lot here is certainly a unique. A unique feature of the lot. I'm not so much moved by the, the topography, but the, the corner lot really makes it hard on, on the homeowner in this circumstance where you take a six feet, a six foot setback and turn it into a 25 foot setback. It, in a town like Newport, that is, that's a tough. That's a tough delta to have to deal with. So I do concur with Mr. Moore on this one. And I think, you know, my bigger concern before this, the public hearing began was the fence issue. And I went down there and I drove up Neptune Street and I have to say that I do find what the, the city engineer indicated to, to be, to be compelling. You really do have to stop and nudge out there. So I, I don't think that, you know, that that really is as much of an issue as it appeared to me at the get go. So I can, I can support this project also.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Delisle, Mr. Swanton.
Yeah, I'm, you know, this is yet another pool on a corner lot in Newport. And we've, we've approved several of these in the last year because it's really not the applicant's fault that there's. They are, they have frontage on two streets. On the other hand, this is a very dense and special neighborhood. You know, I too live in the South End. I walk by this parcel a lot. But this is a very small pool, not only shallow, but you know, 14 by 18 is a small pool. I know it's been painful. The construction seems like it's gone on forever. But. On the answer to my question, it sounded like the pool itself is not going to be a long-term project here. And I also have to say, I remember about a year ago, when this came before us, the house. And the applicant was asked nicely if they might put in historically appropriate windows. That's not something the city can insist on. But the applicant did it and then they look quite good actually compared to a lot of windows that go in. So all in all, you know, I can support this pool in the side yard.
Okay, very good. And thank you, Mr. Swanton, Mr. Shannon.
Thank you, Chair. I have to echo the comments made by my colleagues. I think it is a very modest pool. And I do think they did a good job coming to us with something that, you know, wasn't slammed into the, the side yard setback, which is actually a front yard. I do think the restoration of this home has been done well. It's tasteful. So I can support, I can support this project.
All right, thank you, Mr. Shannon and Mr. Bennet.
Yeah, I will echo, echo those comments. I'm. I'm satisfied certainly that we have a unique situation here with the corner lot and that certainly is not the applicant's fault necessarily that the corner lot is, is zoned the way it is. So all of these factors being considered, I would approve this application as well.
All right, thank you, Mr. Bennet. And, and I, I too, I echo the sentiments of my colleagues with the greatest respect, of course, to the, you know, certainly the empathy of, of being a close proximity neighbor to any property that's undergoing construction. Of being a close proximity neighbor, uh, to any property that's undergoing, uh, construction, uh, and I believe, uh. I was, I was certainly struck by the, uh, the heartfelt remarks of Ms. McCauley. Uh, as well as, uh, the comments of Mr. Williamson, I believe, um, with respect to their impacts, um, I feel this is a fairly modest. Uh, request, uh, certainly as pools go, uh, and I, I feel as though if this were being brought to us by. Uh, any other applicant within the zoning district, uh, you know, we would, we would look at it in, uh, through this lens. And, uh, and, and find it equally, uh, modest, notwithstanding the, the certainly the acute impacts of the moment. Um, and we hope those will be certainly mitigated, and we invite, uh, any members of the public who find to the contrary to reach out. Uh, and make sure that you let, um, the, uh, the city know, uh, so that it trickles down to all of the, uh. All of the, uh, the parties involved, so that if there's something that's coloring outside of the lines when it comes to noise, sound, uh, impact, uh, et cetera, that, uh. That, uh, that the city is made aware, uh, but with that, I, I, I certainly echo the comments of, uh, of the members that have spoken. Uh, with that, I think we will go ahead and close the deliberations portion and I will, um, I will move on to the, uh, to the voting segment of, of this public hearing. So, um, with that, uh, may we have a motion by a member of the ZBA.
Mr. Chair, I move, um, to approve the variance for 61 purchase street application 2020 dash 05.
Okay, the motion's made by Mr. Moore, do we have a second?
Bud Shang, and I'll second the motion and correct the, uh, docket number to 2021 dash 05.
Thank you very much.
Uh, the motion is made by Mr. Moore and seconded by Mr. Chen. Uh, and again, the voting members are, uh, Mr. Chan Petty, myself, Mr. Moore, Mr. Delisle, Mr. Swanton and Mr. Chen, uh, calling the roll, uh, Mr. Moore.
Yes.
Mr. Delisle.
Yes.
Mr. Swanton.
Yes.
Mr. Chen.
Yes.
And Rob Chan Petty, I vote yes, that is five in the affirmative, the eyes have it, the motion carries and the application is approved. Uh, thank you all very much and, uh, thank you, um, members, uh, of the, uh, of the audience, Miss, Miss McCauley and, uh, Mr. Williamson for your comments, uh, they were, um. They were, they were carefully considered as well and, and I want to thank you for your participation in that. Uh, moving on to the next application, uh, on our. Thank you. Um, the next application on our docket is, uh, the application of Nine Woodland Street. Nine Woodland Street is a variance, uh, document 2021 dash 10 to allow an upward extension. To add a dormer to an existing garage, um, this matter is also continued from, uh, the hearing date of March 9th, 2021. May we hear from the applicant?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, excuse me just one moment, Mr. Chairman, this is Mr. Delisle, I'm gonna recuse myself from this matter.
Thank you, Mr. Delisle, so the, uh. Mr. Chairman, this is Greg Bennet, I also must, uh, recuse myself.
Very good. Uh, we have the recusal, uh, the recusal of, uh, Mr. Delisle and Mr. Bennet, um, so. That means that we have, uh, four voting members, uh, the voting members of this application would be Mr. Moore. Um, Mr. Swanton, Mr. Chen and myself, Rob Chan Petty. Um, that's four members, which means that the applicant must have unanimity, which is an, a, a, a yes vote from all of the. Four voting members in order to prevail, it's usually at this time that we ask the applicant. Uh, whether the applicant wishes to go forward with, uh, a minute, what we call a minimum board. Uh, or to request a continuance, uh, to such time as a, uh, a, a five-member board would be available, so. Um, with that, I believe we have, uh, the application is being made by Mr. Chris Offier. Uh, Mr. Offier, do, uh, do you, uh, do you wish to be heard on that before we proceed?
Yes, let's proceed tonight.
Very good, thank you, sir. Uh, okay, so with that, uh, Mr. Offier, uh, you're the applicant, uh, you have the floor, sir.
Alright, thank you, so, uh, the proposal before the ZBA for the dormer addition, uh, to the existing. Accessory structure, which is a garage, um, the slight, uh, adjustment and, um. I think what I originally thought going into the, the proposal and, and design, so when originally constructed, the accessory structure. Was granted a variance for height, um, but based on the prior variance for the accessory structure. Uh, when trying to determine what relief is required for the current proposal, it became pretty clear that the prior relief request, um. For building height, additional building height was not required per, um, an NZO. Per the NZO, which is measured from the mean grade elevation to the mean roof elevation, so the additional dormer. Um, revi- the dormer, um, within the architecture design actually meets the required setbacks. Uh, to constitute a dormer and therefore building height is not measured, um, in this particular design, um. So it's more of a mean slope adjustment as opposed to a height adjustment, as I originally thought going into this. Um, and I'll, I'll pause if there's any questions and, or there's a little more detail behind that, but, um. Summary, the, the variance for height that sits within the existing variance.
Very good, uh, Mr. Offier, was there any, uh, anything else that you wanted to add as part of your presentation?
Yeah, sure, uh, so just for the additional context, the structure measures, if, when you, if you look at the design, um. Less than, uh, the 15 feet ma- maximum, um, for an accessory structure in the location. So the dormer itself doesn't actually trigger additional relief, um, within the proposal, so. It's basically already granted within the variance, um, I believe. Um, and I think that's it.
Very good, um, okay, well with that, we'll go ahead and close this portion of the public hearing and we'll go to, uh, the public comments section, um. Any members of the, uh, of the audience who wish to speak in connection with this application, please just. Click the hand icon at the bottom of your Zoom screen, raise your hand and, uh, Mr. Port will. Recognize, I'll recognize you, Mr. Port will unmute your mic, we'll ask you to again, just please, uh, try to keep your comments to two minutes and give your name and address for the record. Uh, looks like we have, uh, the hand raised of Mr. David Ulette, um, and if you want to go ahead and unmute Mr. Ulette's mic and Mr. Ulette. Uh, just make sure that your micro, that your microphone at the bottom left is, uh, unmuted, you have the floor, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chan Petty. How is the audio on your end?
I'm sorry, you cut off for a second, Dave, what, I, was that? Dave, can you hear us?
Mr. Chan Petty, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you now, sorry about that, we lost you for a moment.
Okay, uh, did you happen to receive my letter pertaining to this matter?
Was it sent into, uh, the, um, to the planning office?
Uh, yes, it was on March 5th.
Andy and Caitlin, do we, um, did the members receive a copy, I don't recall it, uh, but I want to make sure that it was distributed.
Yeah, we're checking right now, like, anything that was distributed, uh, we've received by the office, we would have shared with the board or posted, so, uh, we can check, but I don't know off the top of my head.
Yes, it is posted on our website, thank you.
Yeah, it is, I saw it.
Okay, um, Mr. Ulette, it looks like it was, uh, it was posted to the website, so not only did the members would have had access to it, though, that's not to say that they. Uh, each of the members, myself included, uh, had the opportunity to read it, the members of the public would have, uh, but. If I might, uh, if you might indulge us, um, would you, uh, would you feel free to include and, and you can take additional time as needed to, uh. To summarize for us, uh, the, uh, the, the merits of that letter so that we are, we're all on the same page and we can, uh, we can hear your comments.
Okay, certainly, um, well anyways, I'll just, uh, try to read it quickly verbatim, so I don't miss anything. Um, the authors and I are direct butters, uh, we share a side lot line as well as a driveway. The sole means of vehicular access to the garage on the author property is via a driveway situated. Within a right-of-way over a portion of my property. In 2015, I supported the proposal by the prior owners of Nine Woodland Street, the Rossi family. To replace the pre-existing one-story, one-car garage with an enlarged garage which included an attic storage space. Prior to petitioning the ZBA for the necessary approvals, the Rossi's discussed the proposed project with me. To address my desire to maintain privacy in my backyard, which is approximately three feet from the garage. The Rossi's proposed a structure with no windows, doors or skylights facing my property. Like the Rossi's, the authors have discussed their proposed project with me prior to submitting their ZBA filing. They have also kindly considered my privacy concerns in the design of their project. And have proposed no new windows or skylights overlooking my backyard. I am concerned, however, that a future property owner may not be as considerate and may seek to add additional windows or skylights overlooking my yard. During the pandemic, like many of us, my neighbor Chris has been working from home. His working from home has caused me no inconvenience of any sort, and I anticipate his future use of the upper level of the garage as a home office. Will not be problematic. Eventually, however, the authors will move and I fear that the future use of the garage may change. A future owner may wish to use the garage as the location of a home daycare facility. Or home occupation use, which could result in additional vehicles and visitors crossing my property to access the garage. Due to the garage's proximity to my property and the need to traverse my property to access the garage. I request that any approvals issued by the ZBA include conditions to, to provide ongoing safeguards against overburdening the right-of-way over my lot. And to ensure that the intensification of use from storage. Which had been on the Rossi's application to home office, which is proposed in order, the current application. Will not infringe on my use and enjoyment of my property. I request the ZBA consider the following conditions of approval. The structure shall be built in accordance with the drawings submitted with the application for a variance. No change to the exterior of the structure from what was depicted on the application for a variance. Including the construction of any dormer or the installation of any window. Skylight or door shall occur without an advertised public hearing before the ZBA and the issuance of modified ZBA approvals. Use of the structure for home occupation use or any use other than as indicated in the submitted application for a variance. Is not permitted. The structure shall be used solely by the occupants of Nine Woodland Street and shall may not be used to receive visitors, mail or deliveries. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Ulette, and, uh, just for the record, I, I do want to say thank you for taking the time to read that. For the benefit of, uh, all of the members as well as those in attendance, I did go back while you were reading it and I, uh, found that, in fact, I do have that letter. Uh, I did see and read that letter, uh, I wish I could say I remember from one day to the next, but. As you began to read, I re- I recognized immediately the substance, so I thank you for just sort of refreshing for everyone's benefit, uh, your comments and your thoughts. Uh, they're very important in the process, so, um, uh, with that, um, if there isn't anything else, Mr. Ulette. Um, were there any other comments you wanted to share other than your letter and, uh, your, uh, your remarks?
Uh, I noticed that the, uh, application was revised, so I was just wondering what the revision was.
The, um, most recent application, uh, revision, let's see, Caitlin, do you, um, do you have that in front of you?
Um, to pull up, I, I guess I would ask, um, Andy Port, who's hosting the screen, to pull that up, if you wanted to compare the two, um, revised plan sets.
I can pull up the two, I would think we're really talking about a, uh, reduction in the size of the, uh, the roof, uh, adaptation, which is the, the dormer. Uh, but I'll pull that up.
Yep, and, uh, and Andy, if you can put that up on the screen, just so we can confirm, so, uh, Mr. Ulette, it appears that the applicant, um, did a, uh, a final tweak of the dormer. Uh, in its shape, and so what, uh, Mr. Port is highlighting and then just enlarging. Right now is the, um, revision, both the front elevation as well as the right side elevation, and it appears the dormer itself has been tweaked.
Thank you.
Very good, um, alright, thank you, Mr. Ulette, uh, anyone else wish to speak in connection with this application? Anyone, uh, seeing no hands, going once, going twice and, uh. Seeing still no hands, I will close that portion of the public hearing and we'll go to questions from the board, um, we'll begin with, uh, Mr. Uh, Mr. Moore.
Thank you, Mr. Chan Petty, um, I would just like, just to follow up on the question, um, for Mr. Ulette. I would just like to hear from, uh, Mr. Offier. His description of the changes.
Yep, uh, so we, we took in the dormer, uh, a couple inches, um, to fit within. Uh, the existing variance of, of dormer allowance and that was, uh, really. Going off of like the pri- the prior variance, um, so that we didn't want to. We couldn't increase height without asking for a new variance and we also. Needed to make adjustments to the dormer to fit within the existing variance, so that was the reason for the change.
Okay, thank you, I have no further question.
Alright, very good, uh, thank you, Mr. Moore, uh, Mr. Swanton.
Yeah, I'm just trying to understand this, the, um. Their proposal is to put a dormer on the right side of this building, facing away from the abutter who spoke. Um, and I, I think I've heard that the zoning, uh, enforcement officer has concluded. That we really never needed a variance for height for this in the first place, whenever this was approved years ago. So, I guess it's been modified to kind of fit within the old one and we're basically just modifying a variance. I guess my question is, unless I, unless I missed something there. I, I, the concern seems to be from the abutter that, uh, you know, the, some future owner may put a dormer on the other side, but. I assume what, i- if we were to approve what's in front of us tonight. Nobody can put a dormer on the other side. Without getting a new variance, is that correct? I think that may be a question for the planning department rather than for the.
Yeah, this. Yeah, thank you, that's a great question, I think, uh, it helps to clarify, uh, what's going on with this application, so, uh, agreed completely and that's, uh, that does directly address the abutter's concern, so. Um, these plans would be incorporated by reference into the board's decision, um, that it's, uh, one of the issues that was, uh, mentioned by Mr. Uette earlier. Um, so these plans are referenced in that decision and only, only the work shot on these plans can be, uh, constructed and then. Um, of course, if the board has any special conditions that, that would go with that, um, but a- as, um, as Members Swan just mentioned. I- in the future, if anybody wanted to modify this further, that would be required to be sent back to the board, and that's, i- in effect, what's happening here. The, uh, previous, uh, the, the garage there today is already, uh, gotten an, you know, an approval, this property already has an approval. Um, uh, from, as a variance, so what is being done here is essentially a modification to the original variance. Um, to allow that dormer, but the dormer itself is not triggering any, uh, violation of zoning, um, so, um. And, you know, again, to, to get back to the root of the question, yes, any future modifications to this, for instance, if we're someone which ever tried to do with a dormer on the other side. Would require the same public hearing and notice, um, to, to, um, have this hearing process.
Okay, so we, we, if we approve this tonight, we'd be approving the dormer on the right side, which is not an issue for, for the abutter, but. He can rest assured that if some future owner ever wanted to put a dormer or a skylight on the left side. That that would require a whole nother coming back to a meeting like this and having the city approve that, so I. I just want to make sure, Andy, I got, so that's correct, right?
That is correct.
Okay, well, I think that kind of, because, you know, I wa- went by this one the other day and it seems pretty. That doesn't seem to be a big deal to put a dormer on the right side, um, and I understand the concern of the left. But I, I'm very glad to hear your answer, uh, from the planning department, that there is. There's no approval given, we don't even have to say you can't do it, he can't do it without coming back and asking the city to approve something on the left. So, that was my only question, so thank you, I have no other questions.
Alright, uh, very good, um, thank you, Mr. Swanton, uh, Mr. Chen.
I guess I have a question to follow up on the, uh, previous question, maybe Andy can help with that, um. So it sounds like any changes to the structure would require coming back before, uh, the planning board or the ZBA. What about change of use? Um, I, I, I think, uh, it's difficult to restrict use, but the, uh. The neighbor was also, uh, mentioning he'd like to restrict the use as well.
Yeah, um, use is dictated by the existing ordinance, so, uh, this is not, uh, would not be allowed to be an accessory dwelling unit if that's the question. Um, again, that's something that might require further relief or approval. Again, that's something that might require further relief or approval to do. And that's not something that's being granted here. So this is essentially an accessory structure to the existing residential structure on the property.
At that point, the the owner can use that structure as he sees fit as well, including, I assume, running us. You know, his own business out of it. Is that the case?
Yeah, there are different types of home businesses, but generally speaking, it sounds like that would be acceptable here. You know, it's not a you couldn't have a high traffic home business. You could really only have just your home office, but that is allowed under zoning. So that again is not a violation of zoning, in my opinion.
Okay, I guess I just wanted that clarified so that the neighbor understands that it's. Difficult for us to regulate use as part of this process. Thank you. I have no other questions, Chair.
Very good. Thank you very much for for that commentary. And finally, Mr. Bennet. Your thoughts?
I I've recused myself from this.
I apologize. Thank you, Mr. Bennet. And Mr. Delisle have recused themselves. So I. I don't have any additional questions that haven't already been addressed by the by the board.
Could I ask one more question? This is Ken Swanton.
Yeah, of course, Ken.
Which is, I really liked Mr. Shagman's question there. I wish I thought of it. The I guess there was a question about could somebody run a daycare center there? It's clearly not a home office to have a daycare center, but. But I assume Andy Port from your answer that the person could not run a daycare center there under the current zoning. Is that correct?
Excuse me, sorry, I was muted. That would be my reading, yes.
Yeah, and I'll chime in as well. That's that's correct. I mean, basically, other than what's being, this is Rob Champetti again. Other than what's being applied for now, and that includes the alteration that's being applied for now, any alteration in the structure. Which includes the roof line, the dormer line. And any alteration in the use, which includes its current use or some future unknown contemplated use would would only be permissible with relief from. Our board and possibly other boards as well, depending on what was being proposed. But there is a sort of a stopgap, a an automatic sort of safety valve in place, as it were. With respect to the relief that's being sought from the ZBA and should this relief be met with favor. By vote of our of our members of the board, it is it is not able to be expanded upon in any in any substantive way. Without further relief from either this or some future board with a full, you know, a full, the full exposure of notice. Public hearing, a butter notice and an opportunity to be heard. I hope.
Go ahead. Andy Port, I just figured for just another comment. It's up to the board, of course, and. The the board has the ability for appropriate conditions that would need to be placed to limit certain future uses or activities. So. If the board saw fit or felt unnecessary to limit it to, you know, to the home office use or any uses recently accessory to the the single family. You know, use on the property, or for instance, prohibit the use of it for an accessory dwelling unit, for instance. That's something the board could could do if it felt that was necessary. But again, this approval here is not for directly for that use. This is just for. The construction work that's being proposed. And again, as an accessory use to the residential structure on the site.
Is the chair muted?
Yeah, I think the chair is muted. Hello, can you guys hear me?
Yep.
Great. So do we have any further questions from any members of the ZBA? Hearing no questions and seeing no hands, I will go ahead and close that portion of the public hearing. Before we go to deliberations, however, I I would like to just backtrack for a moment and reopen. Under the discretion of the chair, our public comment section, just for a moment, as I see the hand of Mr. Dave Lulett. Mr. Roulette, and Andy, if you can go ahead and unmute his his mic and Mr. Let's make sure your mic is unmuted. Was there something else you wanted to add before we moved on to the final deliberation, sir?
Yes. So just to clarify, so even if a future owner wanted to put in a skylight, that would require ZBA approval. And I'm sorry, a second quick question. If in the future, say, an architect wanted to run his office out of this this loft. And he didn't necessarily. Receive visitors with appointments as indicated under some of the home occupation use. But he did, you know, he did receive business clients to conduct meetings and such. Would that be prohibited and require future ZBA review and approval?
And so, Mr. Let, if I understand your question, you had two parts of it. The first was if a if a skylight was being added to the roof line. Would that by with that by itself trigger ZBA review? The answer is, I do not think so. I hate to give you an amorphous answer, but it depends. If the alteration doesn't change the roof line, but adds adds fenestration, you know, glazing. I would, I would have to defer to the building department as to whether they would issue a permit without sending that up to to ZBA for further review. If they were changing the alteration, that is to say, the profile or any of the structural elements of the, you know, what's being permitted. The answer is yes, they would have to come back before us.
Mr. Chair, this is Andy Port, if I could speak to that.
Sure. And then there was a second part of Mr. Roulette's question, which was the in-home occupation. And Andy, if you'd like to address that as well, please, by all means.
Sure. Yeah. So the the type of home occupation that's drawing any customer traffic, that's the one that would require further review. So to address your concern there, that. Specific instance that you described would require coming to the board again. And again, that public notice and hearing process. With respect to skylight or whatnot, the way that the process works now in terms of permits and report is. The building office obviously is administering the building code, but because this permit here. Has or would have a set of plans referenced in it, which is the plans we're seeing here that shows all the sides of the the building, including the roof. Those are incorporated by reference and the decision requires compliance with those plans. So if a further modification was needed, it would have to be determined in the office, whether that was a minor modification, as the chair mentioned. Or something more substantive that would have to come back to the board here. I think in this instance, if the board want, you know, if if we rely upon the clear language in the decision of the board wants to add any further emphasis. The plans that are being approved here are are what is being approved. So. The record can show where the concerns were relative to any future windows and whatnot, but. Typically, our office would be before billing permits are issued for any window or something like that of that nature being put in. We would be reviewing those applications, our zoning administrator would in particular, to make sure that. There was compliance with any variances in the property like this decision here and the plans that are shown.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Port. And Mr. Let, does that does that address the majority of your questions?
He not really. It it sounds like it's, I would feel much better if the ZBA decision decision explicitly included the conditions that I requested in the letter.
Well, I that's before our board and certainly if if members of the board find, you know, in in the sort of voting majority to include those. Then you'll you'll be able to see those included and I without sort of. Prognosticating the future, I will say that we we take, we take that information under very careful. You know, empathy and consideration. So I I thank you for sharing it so that we have it before us and we momentarily shall see. But was there anything else that you wanted to address while while you had the floor, sir?
Uh, no, thank you.
Very good. Can I ask a question? This is Ken Swanton.
Of course, go ahead.
It sounds like the change of use is not going to be an issue. Somebody's have to come back if they want to make this more of a business, but the skylight sounds like the only thing they could slip through here. I'm wondering if the applicant would mind if we put into our decision, did you cannot put a skylight on the left side of your. Of the building here, and that that seems like it would clear up the last remaining piece with the with the applicant mind if we just put that as part of the decision? Can I ask that question?
Yeah, of course, that that is, that's fair game for sure. So, Mr. Arthur, you hear from one of our members. This is Chair Champetti again. One of the comments that are before us is that the board seems to be toiling with is this notion of. You know, just impact to one of your direct butters, Mr. Let. He's requested specifically the prohibition of that skylight on that side of the building that is closest to his view. Do you have any objection or do you wish to be heard on that?
No, I don't have any objection to the skylight. On his side, on Dave's side.
Okay, well, I appreciate your your consideration, sir, and certainly it allows the board to to include that language to create. You know, our goal here is to try to certainly be fair and balanced in our decision making and our deliberation, but also be empathetic to. You know, a disparate stakeholders and, you know, the proximity of neighbors in a place like Newburyport, in particular, where everything's close and. Closing quarters with one another, it's certainly more harmonious if we if we if we discuss this out loud. So I thank you for your. Your open mindedness to that, Mr. Let. I thank you for sharing your thoughts. Any other now, I'm going to reclose that portion of the public hearing, the public comment section, and that's going to bring us to deliberations. So as we deliberate on this application, what we have before us is a is. Pardon me just a moment, is a variance modification under the DCOD and 10H of our zoning code. So as the board deliberates, I'll just go through our criteria here, the zoning. The zoning board's being asked to to consider the addition of this dormer with the condition that we've discussed in the prohibition of a of a skylight. To an already issued zoning relief that allowed for the garage to begin with a modification to a variance. So with that, we'll go ahead and open up our deliberations. We'll start with Mr. Moore.
Thank you, Mr. Champetti. Given that that this is before us because it's a it's an adjustment that would a dormer that would be. Allowed by right, but only because it's a variance involved has to come before us. And given all the excellent points brought up. By both the the butter, Mr. Let, and by my colleagues, just to ensure that and to solidify the fact that any other changes. That that are made to this. Property or this. This garage would have to come back for the board. I'm comfortable with. With putting in, you know, the the conditions and with the fact that there won't be any changes outside of what's in front of us right now without coming back before the city and for this board. So. I can certainly support this variance modification.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Mr. Moore. Mr. Delos recused himself. So, Mr. Swanton, your thoughts?
Yeah, I too can support this. I agree with my colleague there and just adding in the language that no skylights on the left side. So I can support this modification of the variance.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Swanton. Mr. Chen.
I echo the comments made by my colleagues and again, support adding the restriction that no skylight would be put on the left side elevation. So I can support this modification to the variance.
Thank you, Mr. Chen, and I echo the comments of my of my colleagues. So with that, we can close the deliberations. And do we have a motion from the board?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the variance modification application. Number 2021 dash 10 with the following conditions. There'll be no skylight on the left side of the garage. And that the it is to be used only as an for accessory use. Or home office use only. And I know that language will be included in decisions, but I just want to have that as a. And if I've missed that, I might invite my colleagues to to better word that than I just did. But with those conditions. I make a motion to approve.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Do we have a second?
I'll second it. Ken Swanton, I think, Mr. Moore, well stated.
Very good. Mr. Moore's motion, Mr. Swanton's second, calling the roll. Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Swanton?
Yes.
Mr. Chen? Rob Champetti, I vote yes, that is four in the affirmative. This is with the condition of no skylight on the left side and. Only to be used as an accessory or home office structure, and that will be written in the decision. Four in the affirmative, the eyes have it, the motion carries and the variance modification is approved. Thank you very much, everyone, and Mr. Arthur. As well as as well as Mr. Roulette for your your presentation and your comments, Mr. Roulette. Moving on to the next, the next application. Our next public hearing, this is the application on 41 Franklin Street. It's a special permit for nonconformities, docket. 2021 dash 011 to remove a three by four landing and construct a new eight by 10 mudroom. Extending a preexisting nonconforming front and rear yard setback. May we hear from the applicant, Mr. Catalano? Mr. Catalano, can you can you hear us, sir?
Mr. Catalano, we're having some trouble getting your audio. We're hearing some crackling, not sure if it's your microphone or anything obstructing your microphone. Could you speak again? It sounds like we might be able to hear you. Please try. Yes, we might lose you. We'll let you try to let you know, but please speak. Thank you. Yeah, we're we are losing you, Stephen. I'm not sure if there's another device you could use or if you're able to call in perhaps.
Okay, so it sounds as though Andy is Mr. Catalano calling in via phone now.
As I could gather, it sounds as if he was doing to try to call in. I was going to look and see if if he was able to.
I see a new number that's added here, 2828344.
I know that's not new. That's been there. That's a.
Okay, so what we can do is we can, while Mr. Catalano is trying to connect in, why don't we press pause on that application just to keep things moving along? And what we'll do is we will move for the moment, we'll just circle back to Mr. Catalano, but we'll move for the moment to. The next application that I believe is on our docket here, which is 42 Prospect Street. And I believe Mr. Swanton is recused himself. So the voting members on this application are myself, Rob Champetti. Mark Moore, Stephen Delisle, Walter Channon, and I think Gregory Bennet. So we have. One, two, three, four, five of us as voting members. So with that, I will go ahead and just skip to the next application, just to keep things moving. This is the application of Kathleen Klaus, 42 Prospect Street. And I apologize, it could be closed. And you can correct me the moment you have the floor. And my apologies if we got it wrong. Docket 2021 dash 12 special permit for nonconformities to construct an 80 square foot addition to bring the rear stairs into code compliance. May we hear from the applicant, Ms. Close? And Ms. Close, if you want to make sure you go to the bottom left of your Zoom screen and you'll see an icon for a microphone, just make sure that that's unmuted and you see a green light there.
Okay, can you hear me now?
We can. Thank you.
Okay, so yeah, this is Kathleen Close. Yeah, so. You can hear me, okay?
We can.
Hello. Okay.
We can.
This is. This is to correct the current back stairway, which is steep and hard on my knees. And it's not up to code. So bringing bringing it up to code requires extending it about six feet. It requires no change to the existing rear setback. And would retain the existing building line and extend it six feet into the side yard. um, and would retain the existing building line and extend it six feet into the side yard.
Okay, uh, was there any additional information you wanted to, uh, to share as part of your presentation or was that, uh, was that about it?
Um, that's, that's the basics. Yeah, I mean, that's the core of it. It's in order to, yeah.
Well, we may have additional questions, Ms. Close, uh, but we can circle back to on that and
Okay.
So, um, I just didn't want to cut you short before we moved, uh, through the next segments of the hearing.
Okay.
Very good. Um, thank you very much, Ms. Close. Uh, we will go ahead and close that presentation portion of the public hearing and and go to question, uh, of the public comment section. And, uh, we'll just see if any members of the attendees wish to speak uh, in connection with this application. And we'll just ask that you please kindly give your first and last name and your, uh, home address to the, our keeper of the minutes. And, uh, kindly keep your comments to two minutes or under if you could. Um, seeing no hands, uh, going once, going twice, uh, anyone wish to speak in connection with this application, seeing still no hands. I will go ahead and close that portion of the public hearing and we will move on to questions from the board. And, um, again, Mr. Swanton has recused himself, so we will, um, move through our slate of CBA members, uh, that are voting. So, Mr. Moore?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have no questions at this time, but circle back, please.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Moore, Mr. Delisle.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, Ms. Close, um, just if you could help me just understand a couple of things, um, I'll, uh, I, we, I guess we can't talk directly, uh, oh, no, uh, Mr. Chairman, this is the question section, correct?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, so, okay, okay. Uh, so, Ms. Close, you, you indicated that it's, uh, the, the the new sort of stairway construction will extend six feet into the, the side, uh, the side yard. Is that right?
Yes, that's correct. I mean, it's, it's called the side yard because we're on a corner. And so what we think of us, of our side yard is actually the rear yard. Um, the side yard is, is actually a yard, you know, there's, there's space there and it's extending in that direction.
And that, but that won't impact any of the, uh, the setbacks and that's fine.
No, no.
The second question I had, um, Andy, if you could go to, to, to the page eleven of, of the presentation. Um, so that area that's, that's marked as replace uh, sort of to the left of the, um, the corner board, that is going to come out and be replaced by the new entryway to the stairwell that, that would then extend, uh, some feet to the back, but it, but it'll come out towards us. Is that how it'll work?
It won't come it won't come out any farther than it is now. It's in the other direction that the six feet extension take.
Okay, so it'll go backwards that way. Okay, and that, um,
Yeah.
And that it will be replaced with, with the new, uh, uh, the new construction as shown on the, on the plan.
It'll be replaced, but it'll be exactly in the same place.
Right, and then, and then, um, all the, the, the entire stairwell will be enclosed going up to the, the second story, correct?
Yeah. Yes, that's right.
Okay, all right, that's, uh, those are my questions for now. Thank you.
Very good. Um, okay, uh, let's see, Mr. Delile, uh, Mr. Delisle, questions from you.
So, Mr. Chair, those were my questions.
Oh, sorry, Mr. Delisle.
Thank you. I know they were good.
I, I don't have the best speakers and sometimes I gotta say there, there, it's like a tinny speaker on my computer and uh, you know, I, I'd say you and Mr. Moore sound very alike. So I've gotta, I've gotta keep myself noted as to who's speaking. Uh, but thank you. Mr. Mr. Swanton? Uh, and you're, you've recused yourself. So, Mr. Shannon?
Delisle asked my questions. Uh, I have no other questions, Chair. Thank you.
Very good. And, uh, Mr. Bennet, any questions from you?
Uh, no questions. Mr. Delisle's questions clarified. My understanding of the, of the application here.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Bennet, and I agree. Uh, Mr. Mr. Delisle's questions kind of addressed mine as well, so I have no additional questions, uh, either. So with that, we'll close that portion of the public hearing. Uh, and we will go to deliberations. Um, since this is a special permit for non-conformities, um, to grant a special permit for non-conformities, just to give the board sort of the lens through which we deliberate, the board must find that there will be no addition of a new non-conformity. Um, and the, um, uh, and the board must also find that the application will not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing, pre-existing non-conforming user structure. And when we make this finding, we as a board, uh, may consider factors such as the scale, the massing, the volume, the location, and even the size of the proposed structure or the extension or alteration as we compare it to the existing structure, uh, lot, uh, or the lot of, of, uh, other structures and lots in the neighborhood and reasonable alternatives to the proposal. This is all under nine B two. Uh, so with that in mind, uh, we will move into deliberations and we will begin, uh, with Mr. Moore.
Thank you, Mr. Champetti. Um, I think, um, this obviously is a, or at least in my mind, is a very modest, uh, proposal. Um, there's no new non-conformity, just the extension of an existing front and rear yard setback. Um, and given the, the nature of it being eighty-six square feet, I don't find that it's more substantially detrimental to the neighborhood than what's there now, so I can certainly support it.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Moore, uh, Mr. Delisle.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, I would agree with Mr. Moore. I don't see any new non-conformity here. Uh, and the proposed changes, in my opinion, will not be any more, uh, will not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than what currently exists. So I can support this project also.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Lau and, uh, Mr. Shannon.
I agree with my colleagues. Uh, I don't think it'll be any more detrimental. Actually, I think it'll, uh, it'll be an improvement, so I can support this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shannon, and, uh, Mr. Bennet.
Yes, I agree. The, uh, criteria for relief sought here have been met and, uh, I would agree it also is an improvement, uh, over the existing conditions.
Thank you, Mr. Bennet, and I, I agree with that, uh, and I find that the, uh, the proposal is, um, is, is certainly modest in its request. And I also note that we, uh, we certainly, uh, haven't heard any um, any, uh, contrary comments from any of the butters or neighbors and that, uh, that means a lot as well because that those are the folks closest to the impact and certainly comes with, uh, quite a bit of, of empathy that we listen to those, those comments when they, when they come to members of the board. So, uh, with that, I will close the deliberations and we will move into the vote. Uh, do we have a motion uh, on this application? Members in the CBA, uh, do we have a motion to approve the application?
Greg Bennet, I will move that special permit for non-conformities application twenty twenty-one dash twelve relating to forty-two Prospect Street be approved.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Bennet. Uh, do we have a second?
Um, I'll second that, Mr. Delisle.
Okay, motions made by Mr. Bennet and seconded by Mr. Delisle, uh, calling the roll. Uh, Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Delisle?
Yeah.
Mr. Shannon?
Yes.
Mr. Bennet?
Yes.
And Rob Champetti, I vote yes. That is five in the affirmative. The eyes have it, the motion carries. Uh, the application for a special permit for non-conformities, uh, is approved. Thank you very much and, uh, good luck, uh, good luck to you, uh, uh, and thank you for the, the presentation.
Thank you.
Very good. Uh, moving to our, now, Andy, can you see if, um, Mr. Catalano is back online and, uh?
Yeah, Steve, are you able to talk to us now?
Uh, yes, can you hear me now?
We can.
Ah, that's great. All right.
All right, um, and Mr. Mr. Catalano, if you'd just give me a moment, I'm just going to, uh, introduce your application and then we'll give you the floor, sir.
Yeah, thank you.
Very good. Uh, so we'll revive, we'll, we'll circle back to the application. Special permit for non-conformities of Stephen Catalano, forty-one Franklin Street to remove a three by four landing and construct a new eight by ten mudroom extending uh, the pre-existing non-conforming front and rear yard setback. Uh, may we hear from the applicant, Mr. Catalano?
Oh, yes, I'm, I'm here representing, um, Ms. Pahigian and Ms. Harris on, um, the, um, addition to the eight by ten mudroom with the, um, with the additional of the landing as well. Um, they've been residents of Newburyport for thirteen years on that street as well and, um, they're looking to, you know, the family's growing and they want to add the addition to the mudroom so that they can, um, obviously make it a little bit more comfortable for them. Um, with the addition of the mudroom, there is no new nor new conformities, um, with the, um, with the project as far as, um, um, out of the norm, um, the projects, the setbacks are, um, gonna remain the same. The house structure itself doesn't, uh, move. It's just the side of the, um, the mudroom itself.
Is that, uh, was that about it, Mr. Catalano?
Yeah, um, you know, we, we are removing the, the three foot by four foot, um, landing and just replacing it with the eight by ten mudroom, yes.
Very good. Um, thank you very much. And, uh, we will, uh, unless there's anything else, we'll go ahead and close that portion of the public hearing and, uh, we will go to, uh, public comment. Uh, anyone who wishes to speak in support or opposition, or just simply speak in connection with the application, just raise your hand and we'll, uh, we'll recognize you. Seeing no hands, I will go once, go twice. We will go ahead and close that portion of the public hearing, seeing no hands from, uh, members of the attendees and go to questions from the board. Mr. Moore?
I have no questions.
Very good. Um, Mr. Delisle?
Uh, my only questions would be, uh, with respect to the, the materials used on the exterior, or you're just carrying over the materials that are uh, used on the house?
That is correct, using the clapboard, um, to match the existing on the house and also the, um, same window styles that are on the house currently.
Okay, thank you very much. That, those are all my questions, Mr. Chairman.
Uh, very good. And was that Mr. Delisle?
Yes, it was. Thank you.
Great, I got it right. You and Mr. Moore sound so similar. I gotta, I gotta get better speakers. Um, Mr. Swanton?
Uh, no, this is kind of modest. I have no questions.
Very good. Uh, and, uh, Mr. Shannon?
I have one question. Um, the drawings show that the, uh, mudroom has a flat roof.
That is correct.
Is it a completely flat roof or is it lightly pitched?
Um, it's, it's gotta be a, a, a very, very pitch, um, only, well, obviously to keep the water from running, um, up against to the house. Um, we can't do a pitched roof because there's a window above the, um, where the mudroom's gonna be constructed. So it's probably gonna be a a half inch to, um, foot pitch. So it's gonna be a very slow pitch.
And I assume there's no in, in the future, this would make a wonderful, uh, roof deck?
No.
Great, thank you. I have no other questions, Chair. Thank you, Mr. Shannon and Mr. Bennet.
No questions. This seems to be a modest and well-thought-out design and, uh, I know two neighbors have weighed in in favor of the, uh, application.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Bennet, and I too, uh, have no, um, additional questions that haven't already been, uh, asked and answered. Uh, so, uh, with that, I will close the question and answer portion of the public hearing. Uh, and we will go into deliberations. And again, uh, since this is a special permit for non-conformities, as the members of the CBA deliberate, I'll just ask that the, um, uh, that the, uh, members note the criteria for a special permit for non-conformities. Uh, the applicant will be, will be required, uh, in order to in order for this board to grant the special permit, the board must find that there will be no additional new non-conformity and that there's, uh, no, um, addition of a new non-conformity, no intensification of an existing non-conformity. Uh, the board will also, uh, need to find that there is, um, that the application is not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the pre-existing non-conforming user structure. And when we make this finding, we as a board may consider factors such as location, massing, scale, size, uh, et cetera, of the proposed structure, uh, extension or alteration as compared to the existing structure and lot, um, uh, within the neighborhood or reasonable alternatives to the proposal. Also, uh, finally, I'll note that the project does not appear to trigger the tree or sidewalk ordinance, uh, by DPS. Um, so, uh, with that, uh, we can enter deliberations and we'll begin by Mr., uh, Mr. Moore, your thoughts?
Thank you, Mr. Champetti. Once again, no new non-conformities here, um, as far as the special permit, uh, requirements, uh, so that is excellent. It's a modest proposal. I think as a colleague said succinctly, um, well thought out, so I can certainly support this as there, I can't see any way that, uh, as proposed, this is more, uh, substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. The end.
Thank you, Mr. Moore, uh, Mr. Delisle.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm gonna agree with Mr. Moore. I don't think there's, uh, anything else to say. He said it very well.
Very good. Uh, Mr. Swanton?
Yeah, I too agree. And not, there are also no new non-conformities if that hasn't already been said, so I'm fine with this.
And, uh, thank you. And, uh, Mr. Shannon?
I agree with my colleagues, uh, uh, as stated, and I, and I think this is a an improvement to a nice-looking home, uh, so I can support this application.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I mean, Mr. Shannon, um, Mr. Bennet.
I would agree with those comments, well-stated and, uh, I would approve.
All right, thank you, Mr. Bennet. Uh, I too share the sentiments of the, uh, of the board and, and I have nothing further to add. Um, seems to be a modest, uh, request and, and, um, I can certainly support it as well. Um, okay, closing the deliberations portion of the public hearing, we will, uh, now move to the vote portion. Uh, do we have a motion to approve from a member of the board?
Uh, Chair, this is Bud Shagn, and I'd like to make a motion to approve a special permit for non-conformities, uh, docket twenty twenty-one dash eleven for forty-one Franklin Street.
I'll second it, Ken Swanton.
Okay, a motion's made by Mr. Shannon and, uh, seconded by Mr. Swanton calling the roll. Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Delisle?
Yes.
Mr. Swanton?
Yes.
Mr. Shannon?
Yes.
And Rob Champetti, I vote yes. That's five in the affirmative. The eyes have it, the motion carries. The special permit for non-conformities is approved. Thank you, um, thank you very much, uh, Mr. Catalano, for your patience and, uh, for your presentation.
I thank you very much.
All right, have a great evening. Okay, um, I believe that brings us to our last application this evening, which is the matter of Five Truman Way. Uh, let's see. It looks like the, uh, Five Truman Way is a special permit for non-conformities. The application is, uh, by, uh, Buena Lena and, uh, Driton Tola, Five Truman Way, twenty twenty-one dash thirteen, special permit for non-conformities to construct an addition of less than five hundred square feet to a pre-existing non-conforming structure via a second floor upward extension and single-story addition to the rear. The voting members this evening, uh, for this application are myself, Rob Champetti, uh, Mr. Mark Moore, uh, Mr. Ken Swanton. Uh, and, uh, Walt, let me just double check here. Ken Swanton, Mr. Walter Shannon, so myself, Mr. Moore, um, Mr. Delisle, Mr. Swanton and Mr. Shannon. Mr. Delisle, you're not recusing yourself on this application, are you?
I am not. I'm here for this.
Very good. So the five voting members are, uh, Rob Champetti, Mark Moore, Stephen Delisle, Ken Swanton and Walter Shannon. With that, um, may we hear from the applicant, uh, Mr. Buana?
Yes, good evening, everyone.
Oh, miss, my apologies.
Oh, it's okay. I know the name is a little bit confusing.
You, uh, you have the floor.
All right, so I want to give a little bit of a background of myself and my husband. Uh, we've moved here in the United States around two thousand and two. We both went to college and that's how we met through college. We married in two thousand and twelve. We've always hung out around Newburyport as we have family here, um, the Trasters. They're on Merrimack Street. Um, we bought our first single family here in Newburyport back in two thousand and seventeen. Uh, we fell in love with the town and we knew we wanted to raise our kids here. Uh, we do have one six-month-old baby right now and we're looking to add an addition of the second floor as our family is growing and, you know, looking forward on having a second one. And due to COVID, we are both working from home. Some days of the week, we both work for the federal government and we both like to not violate any of the rules with our project going forward. We love everything that Newburyport does give, you know, does over to our family. The great school systems, the charming downtown. We love the neighborhood where we live in. Everyone, you know, does watch out for one another as we do know our neighbors really closely. We did submit two signs supporting letters. We got those a little bit late. They were sent to Caitlin Sullivan this afternoon before the hearing started at 7:00 PM. And we're looking to add a second addition to our ranch Cape Cod style we have right now. One of the living spaces that we have on the right side, we turning that into a garage. So we're losing some of the space there. So that's one of the reasons we're trying to add to the second floor. And then on the back, the rear, we are doing a our kitchen is going there. It's going to be a single story. We are not violating any of the regulations, go, you know, on the left or the right side of the house, or even the front. We are staying within our setbacks. We've done a little bit of a research around the Five Truman Way. There is other houses that were Cape Cod style around here. They're very close to us, and they're two story buildings. That's all I have. If you have any other questions, I'm here. And our architect is also on the line if you have measurement questions as far as, you know, the roof pitch and all that.
Very good. Thank you very much. Was there anything further you wanted to add?
That's about it for now. If if you want me to go, you know, give a few addresses where we've looked around and the square feet that have added to their houses, you know, that they had same type of house that we do, a ranch Cape Cod style. You know, the distance that they're from here, five Truman. But that's about all I have.
That's that's okay for now. Thank you very much. We're going to go through the next steps and we'll we may have questions for you, but thank you for your presentation.
Excuse me. Can I add something on this presentation?
Of course. Could I just ask you to give your name and address, please, sir?
Yes, my name is Adineer Tosca, 26 Beaver Park, Denver. I'm the architect of this project, and I wanted to add that the height of the building is not passing the height of the all the buildings around.
Okay, very good. Thank you, Mr. Tosca. Anything further you wanted to add, sir?
Oh, sir, thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Okay, so we will go ahead and close the presentation portion of the public hearing and go to the public comment. Any members of the public who wish to speak in connection with the application, just please indicate so by clicking the raise hand button at the bottom of your Zoom screen will identify you and 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 we will unmute your mic. Seeing no hands at the moment, going once, going twice, still seeing no hands, I will go ahead and close that portion of the public hearing, and we will go to questions from the board. In this application, we have the five voting members again are myself, Rob Champetti, Mr. Mark Moore, Mr. Stephen Delisle, Mr. Ken Swanson, and Mr. Walter Chen. So beginning with Mr. Moore, questions from you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Champetti. I would like to ask the applicant, it could be the architect as well either. Just to go into a little more detail on the square footage addition, size addition to this to this cable going up to the it's going from two, I guess, in a more general way.
You asking for the addition on the back?
Yeah, for the whole property, for the whole dwelling, I guess, and proposal.
Okay, so the addition on the back is 370 square feet.
Okay.
And the second floor addition is 1148 square feet.
Okay. And that brings the total, given the first, the original property to what? Do you have that?
Approximately 2300 square feet.
Okay.
It still will remain with three bedrooms on the second floor.
Excellent. And and you referenced that that won't be higher than any other buildings, but it's more, I would just rather have you let us know what will be the height, the mean height. I know it's on the plans, but.
So the required dimensional control is 35 feet. We are 25 foot eight inches. I measured the neighbors, the neighbor house with his permit permission, and it was around 25 feet because I have the laser dimension. So the dimension right now of the existing house is 15 feet, 10 and a half inch. We are proposing to 25 8 inch. So it's approximately the same as the neighbor on the right side. The neighbor on the on the left side is higher than that.
Thank you. And I just wanted to make sure that, and it's on the application as well, and the proposed dimensional control, but I just wanted to not have it mentioned so generally after the open comments. So I appreciate that. And that's all I have for now.
Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Moore. Mr. Delisle.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I I don't have a lot of questions. I guess I'll ask the the exterior materials, what will those be? And could you describe, you know, the the type of windows that you'll be using in the project?
The windows will be matching the existing windows and the siding will be matching the existing siding.
Oh, okay. Okay. That makes a lot of sense. All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Delisle. Mr. Swanton.
I, yeah, I went by here. I noticed the house on the left and on the right already are two stories, so I'm not too surprised to see this one go to two stories. You answered a question earlier about the total square footage, and you mentioned how much was being added on the back and upstairs on the first floor. First floor, some of it's going off to be a garage, so it's really not part of the house square footage. So what's
I'm include, I'm including the 2300 square feet, the parking garage, too.
Yeah. So I mean, what's really the you really shouldn't include that. I mean, so this house becomes what in total? Is it like 2200? And if you add up, not the garage, but the what's left of the first floor plus the addition on the back and the upstairs, what's the total square footage?
The total square footage is around 2,000 square feet, less than 2,000 square feet.
Okay, thank you very much. I have no other, no other questions.
I I included that, sir, because it is the living area right now. So that's why I included that. But it's going to be taken out. Parking garage space.
Yeah, no, I get it. It just overstates it because it's it's not, it's not going to be a part of the house anymore. It's a garage. So thank you very much.
Correct. Thank you.
I have no other questions. I have no other questions.
Okay, great. Thank you, Mr. Swanton. Mr. Chen.
I'm going to bring up the same question yet again. The existing drawing that we have on on the Gis mapping or mean map, and says that the existing house is 1300 square feet today. And I realize you're going to take some of that away for the garage, but if you had 1148 for a second story and 370 for the back, that's another 15, 18. I I can't believe that the amount of house that's remaining on the first floor is only 400 square feet for you to get to your 2,000. This this seems like this is a you know, 2,500 to 2,600 square foot home. Am I missing something there?
The parking garage is 350 square feet itself.
Okay, and the existing house is almost 1,300. So there's 1,000 square feet on the first floor that remain, or even give you 900. And you're adding 1,500. That should be 2,400 square feet. Is is are my numbers wrong?
I mean, 370 is the addition, and the second floor is 1,100, is 1,400. So around 2,300, yeah, around 2,300.
Okay, so it's okay. Very good. I have no other questions, Chair. Thank you.
All right, very good. I also don't have any additional questions that that haven't already been addressed. So we can go ahead and close that portion of the public hearing and go into deliberations. Members of the CBA, because this is a special permit for nonconformities, the board must find that the in order to grant a special permit that there will be no addition of a new nonconformity by the applicant's request and that the this is a second floor addition. It looks like the second floor addition results in an upward extension of a nonconforming front yard setback. The board must also find that the application will not substantially be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the preexisting nonconforming user structure. And of course, when we make that finding, the board may consider factors such as size, scale, massing, volume, and location of the proposed structure, extension or alteration as we would compare it to the existing structure and lot, as well as other structures and lots in the in the neighborhood and reasonable alternatives to the proposal. This all comes under 9B2 of our zoning ordinance. And I'll note finally that the project appears appears to trigger the street tree and sidewalk ordinance, but there's not an existing sidewalk at the property. So according to Connie Preston from the Tree Commission, she has recommended that two small, two small trees that that they be that they be included, and we would incorporate that by reference. So with that, let's go into deliberations. Mr. Mr. Moore.
Champetti, so as we consider the special permit, we're we're cognizant first of any new nonconformities, and there aren't any in this proposal. Second floor addition results in an upward extension as you so correctly described. So I find that acceptable. And as far as being more, the changes being more substantially or substantially more detrimental, try to get that wording ordered properly one year. You're given the changes in the other homes in the neighborhood and certainly the desires to take care of a growing family in the house. I don't see in in looking at the size of this proposal, you know, massive scale of the addition being a problem and being more substantially detrimental to the neighborhood. So I can certainly support it.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Moore, Mr. Delisle.
Yeah, I would concur with Mr. Moore on this. I see that there's no addition of a new nonconformity, and I don't see that the proposal to be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. Seems like as we heard from other members of the CBA, that this neighborhood has two story already, and this would be, you know, sort of growing the neighborhood upward, and it seems like a good plan for for a growing family. So I can certainly support this.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Delisle. Mr. Swanton.
Yeah, I too can support this. I think my colleagues have already said it well, so I will not repeat it.
Thank you, Mr. Swanton. Mr. Chen.
I can also support it. I was originally concerned when I looked at the drawings originally that it had a mass and scale issue, but I won't call it a modest addition, but I I think it's acceptable for the neighborhood in comparison to some of the other homes. So I can indeed support it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chen, and Mr. Bennet.
Yeah, I would agree. I would support this proposal. I note that the the application comfortably meets the zoning board requirements, particularly as it relates to height, which seems to be consistent with the neighborhood, which would get to the notion of size and massing, and it comfortably meets the limit on on height by about nine or 10 feet. So this seems to be a marked improvement to the home, and I think it's a solid, solid proposal.
Thank you, Mr. Bennet. I agree with my colleagues, and I wouldn't add anything further. I don't know that it's necessarily a modest proposal, but I think it's certainly a respectful proposal. And I think it it I I don't think it creates any new nonconformities or intensifies any existing nonconformity. So I too can support it. Closing that portion of the public hearing, we'll go then to the vote. Do we have a motion to approve?
Mr. Delisle, I'll make the motion to approve the special permit for nonconformities for Five Truman Way with the special condition that two new street trees be installed in accordance with the recommendation from the Tree Commission, and this is file number 2021-13.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Delisle has made a motion with the conclusion of the condition of two additional street trees as per the the tree and sidewalk ordinance compliance from our Tree Commission.
Seconded, Mr. Moore.
Seconded by Mr. Moore. So motions made by Mr. Delisle, seconded by Mr. Moore, calling the roll. Mr. Moore.
Yes.
Mr. Delisle.
Yes.
Mr. Swanton.
Yes.
Mr. Chen.
Yes.
Rob Champetti, I vote yes. That is five in the affirmative. The ayes have it. The motion carries. And the special permit for nonconformities is approved. Thank you very much, everyone, and Mr. Tosca and and to our applicants. Thank you very much for your presentation. Have a good evening and best of luck.
Thank you. Thank you.
Take care.
All right, members of the CBA, that concludes our public hearing portion of the meeting. We'll now go into the business meeting. We have before us the approval of the minutes of 392021 that have been sent around by Ms. Gretchen Joy. Do we have any comments? Revisions, notations, or in the absence of all of that, do we have a motion to approve?
I move, I move we approve the minutes. Ken Swanton.
Very good.
Seconded, Mr. Moore.
Motion is made by Mr. Swanton and seconded by Mr. Moore, calling the role and the approval of the minutes. Mr. Moore.
Yes.
Mr. Delisle.
Yes.
Mr. Swanton.
Yes.
Mr. Chen.
Yes.
Mr. Bennet.
Yes.
Rob Champetti, I vote yes. That's six in the affirmative. The ayes have it. The motion carries, and the minutes are approved. Thank you, gentlemen. And thank you, Gretchen, for preparing the minutes for us. Lastly, we have the updates from Andy Port, our planning director, on the Newbury Plum Island Merrimack Valley Planning Commission project exploring fiscal implications of sea level rise. Andy, did you want to school us on all things high tide?
Yeah, sure. Thanks. I'll be brief, and I appreciate your time this evening. I just wanted to update you on something I thought was important. If you're interested in following it, given your role for other reasons, of course, but particularly because of your role as board members in reviewing expansions on Plum Island. So I just wanted to show you a couple of quick images, just as I'm explaining the background. So just a couple of snapshots. This is an illustration of an example, a project that was cited, I think, maybe a year or two back at least on Plum Island as being representative, you know, expansion on the island that if someone else wanted to do something similar, this was, you know, quote, not more detrimental to the Plum Island District. And I I just wanted to show this one and then two others. Again, these are just examples, but projects that have been approved for expansions on Plum Island. And so in this case, there's a good thing here, which is that the structure is getting out of the floodplain with the by being raised, but the structure is being enlarged. And again, additional space and bedrooms could mean more focus on the island. And it's not really clear what happens to the ground level when when infloding and endation is going to be happening in future years. And the reason that that I mentioned that is because of, we've been receiving, by the way, this is, sorry, let me just make sure you can see the images I'm saying. Yeah, so these are the examples I wanted to show you, but a little hard to see the scale. But just to give you an idea, the bottom line or what I'm trying to illustrate with these photographs or these images is just that that expansions have been happening on the island and and there's some question about, you know, some folks see that as not a problem at all. Some folks see it as a potential problem more so going forward. The general context, I think you as board member should have is that the reason why the Plum Island Overlay District exists on the island is because, long story short, the when the sewer system was extended out to the island, the Department of Environmental Protection and the state had made it clear that they would not provide state funding for that utility project if it was going to expand or allow growth on the island. And so there were provisions put in place and administrative consent order and some other contractual relationships between the town of Newbury and Newburyport, which both share the island and the state. And one of those things was that the city of Newburyport adopted Plum Island Overlay District that was intended to limit that growth. So these, we've seen some expansions in recent years, and you should note as board members that the I know in some prior hearings, we had discussed the FAR requirement on the island where we don't have an FAR requirement elsewhere. The the ordinance that was adopted as a Plum Island Overlay District about in about 2001, I think, that was modified in about 2011 to allow that FAR threshold to be exceeded by way of a special permit as opposed to by variance. And so there we see sort of relaxing, if you will, at that point of how people, the threshold at which people have to satisfy requirements to make an expansion on Plum Island. And the reason I give this context to you is because I know you've you've wrestled sometimes, some of you at least, with recent applications on Plum Island. And there is a project that's going on by the town of Newbury. As I think, as you know, there was some some discussion in recent weeks about a potential zoning change for Plum Island that was withdrawn. But what's happening on the island is and I'm just going to show you one of the and I'm just going to show you one of their image here. This is the just an image of some of the erosion that's happened out there of late. Now, this erosion has, I think, somewhat more to do with the jetty, the way it's working there. But erosion happens on the island on a regular basis, and it happens, you know, in different ways. So for instance, this, this was several years back, but this was, I think, in the town of Newbury, and you see a structure. And then in the subsequent image, you can see the house falling in. So it's it's the jetties are not the only source of erosion on the island. It's a barrier beach. And the long story short, if as you were looking at these applications, I just wanted to make sure that you had some of this context for where the regulations came from in the first place. They were intended to limit growth. And the reason why I think both this board and the city council need to consider how much more growth or expansions would be appropriate. And again, that's not my decision to make, but it's it's an important policy discussion to have, I think, at this point, is partly because we're getting new flood maps, new silver maps and flood maps for the island. And that's coming from a project that is being undertaken. It was actually initiated by the town of Newbury. So this communication that you've been given a copy of the company Horsley Witten had applied to the state with the town of Newbury to get three hundred thousand dollars to do a project on Plum Island wherein they're effectively what they're doing is presenting sea level rise maps for the island, showing what will be happening in future decades and how that will make the flooding and inundation on the island in various locations, as well as the main access to it, how that will make it get worse. And so with the maps that have already been prepared by our city engineer that have been prepared by these consultants, going a little further and seeing the extent to which sea level rise will cause further flooding, further storm surge inward onto the island because the island is so flat that once a doom breach breaches, as we've seen on a number of instances, the water can travel pretty far. So this study, and that's why we suggest you just kind of keep this in mind, this project, will be letting you know about one or one to three public meetings that'll be happening between April and June. We're still not clear exactly on the the details of the dates yet. And whether or not there'll be two or three, it looks like. But but for this three hundred thousand dollar project, they're effectively trying to engage both communities, Newbury and Newbury Port. Again, because we both share the island, although Newbury initiated this project to get the communities to have a dialogue about the so-called fiscal implications of sea level rise for the island. And that's just because, again, they're on their maps, they're showing there's going to be more flooding and inundation on the island in future years. And so we need to kind of prepare for that. So in in some of the the recent storm that we saw, and this is irrespective of whether this one has some relationship to the jetty, the erosion that happens and the damage that happens, happens in a similar way. So this is a structure that, you know, that you can see the wave. This is a house that's actually further inland. It's not the first house, the second house. So you've got sand reaching, you know, going through the windows, making houses uninhabitable. And in in the case of the sewer system, if a line out there needs to be shut off to that unit, it's possible that other structures, in this case, when I talk with public services, where only four to six houses were in jeopardy at the edge near the, you know, the water, the there were eighteen homes that might have had to be shut off. I don't know the current status or how that was dealt with. But they there were basically eighteen homes on the loop that would have to have been shut off because the island is not all by gravity or pumps. It's actually by a vacuum system. So it makes them problematic to to try to, you know, just shut off one or two homes at a time. So these things are important to consider as we think about what type of growth to allow on the island, how many more residents might be living out there in the future. And whatever policy decision is made by the city council, whether to amend local regulations and what decisions you make as board members about what to allow, what's reasonable as an expansion and what's appropriate. That's your decision to make. But I do think it'd be important, if you're able to, to follow the public meetings that'll be happening as a result of this Newbury study on the quote unquote fiscal implications of seal over rise for Plum Island, if only to see the primary deliver, I think we're getting from them is these maps to illustrate the footing and inundation issues in future years. There is some fiscal information they're presenting, but I'm not sure it's comprehensive or balanced in the sense that it doesn't really show what cost might be. There's valuation of of property with the island, but there's not an explanation of at least so far that we've seen as to what it would cost to raise Plum Island turnpike. So we have to get a better idea of to what type of improvements or costs there might be in the future versus what today's costs are on the one off emergencies that happen, you know, on a yearly basis in different locations on the island. So anyway, we'll let you know when the dates of those meetings are going to be. They're trying to nail them down right now. The consultant is working with the town of Newbury and with us. And once we have those dates, we can let you know about them. I would suggest just attending the probably Zoom setup, seeing the maps, looking at the information on the website. We can we can get the link to that as well when they've confirmed it's ready. And it'll have some resources, but I think it'll be some good background as you're looking at, you know, the projects on Plum Island. And that's not to take a a negative approach towards, you know, anybody's projects on the island or expansions. But it's it's a serious consideration, given that the it is a barrier beach where the state has already established a policy to limit the growth with us, and that was the intention of the regulatory changes we now have in place. And with these new maps showing that conditions for flooding in particular are going to get worse out there and affect everything from public to private property out there. So that's why I bring this, you know, information to your attention, just so you can follow and track that. We've tried to make sure that the city council members will at least be able to attend those if they are interested. And that will have good context for whatever either the city council or the ZBA decides to do in the future relative to Plum Island.
Okay, Andy, thank you. Thanks very much for laying that out. Anyone have any comments or any questions for Andy before we move along?
I don't want to be that guy, but I'm just gonna ask a quick question. Andy, have you, and I'm sure we have, or you're in the process of it. Have you been looking at other beach barrier communities and how they've handled the assumed impending sea level rise with really hard stop restrictions through zoning? I mean, it seems like our council kind of got up to the beginning of the run and then backed off. So it wasn't going to be that hard to begin with, but are there other communities that handle it with a really hard stop? Like, no, can't do it. And has that been?
It varies all over. Yeah, it varies all over the place. There's a lot of different facets to those those questions. There's a lot of different approaches that communities are taking. It's the information has been coming out relatively speaking recently. People are actually starting to take it seriously and plan for these things and talk about whether it's retreat or, you know, limiting growth or what type of barriers need to be put in to protect infrastructure and development that's already there. That varies quite a bit all over the place. We do try to reach out and track what's happening elsewhere, but it's a constantly moving target.
Right.
I do think that it's understandable that in any location where there's valuation of a property and there's perceived value of expansions there, that that may be problematic or difficult for folks to accept a limitation on growth. And that's a policy decision the city council will have to make at some point. If the council wants to leave the current provisions in place, and you'll be administering the provisions as they are, you'll have to decide when to allow expansions and so forth. You know, some things are allowed as a right, for instance, additional bedrooms and, you know, in certain instances, that sort of thing. But where you feel comfortable, you feel comfortable, it's reasonable to allow those expansions and not be quote detrimental to the district. If the council decides to further refine that and provide clarity as to where they think that line is crossed or whether or not they think growth should be limited. There's nothing inherently wrong with, you know, prohibiting growth in a certain area if it's deemed, you know, in the public interest. But I think there is, it sounds like there's some debate to be had about that, and some people folks wanted more information or wanted more time to digest that. Some folks just simply won't want the change just because it does, if it ever happens, limit further development rights in the future. But again, the the general premise of the land use matter, and this is a citywide concern, not a, you know, one property, not one street, not one neighborhood. But the city's overall fiscal interests and land use considerations is, does it make sense to allow further development in hazard prone areas? And if so, to what degree? So that's something that you and the review of applications need to decide in some instances. And this this is additional context for you. And for the council, if it if it decides to leave the ordinances as they are in place or to modify them in some way, whatever those changes might be, this is important context to have, and it's it's not unique at all to Newbury Port, the sea level rise issue, the flooding and inundation and preparing for that. If any of you have not looked through the residency slide presentation that was given a couple of weeks back, it's on the city's website, we can send you the link again. But there are some illustrations in there. The we are, we have actually been putting the bike path behind the wastewater treatment plant up on a revetment in order to protect the treatment plant. Because the treatment plant is actually separated, it's a low lying itself. So, you know, this is a serious, you know, thing that we're all planning for. We wouldn't be spending money in that situation. We would have just had the bike, you know, run low on the ground there, but we had to protect the plant. And so we're looking at future steps like putting walls, you know, some physically placed walls, some emergency walls, you know, panels that get put in place before a storm just around the plant in future years. Now, these are phased things based on how many years out we are in the worst case conditions. But we're basically planning for this additional flooding and inundation and being exacerbated by sea level rise. So we're trying to basically make sure that as a general land use matter that we're doing the, we're having the responsible discussion about that. Whatever decision comes out of that, that's that's the local policy decision. But it is a discussion that should happen. And and I think it's important for this board only because you will, for now, and, you know, potentially forever into the future, be debating what type of expansions to allow on the island and may have see further disputes about that one way or another. There's lots of other issues that the city has, you know, to address. But as far as residency and climate change, which is the recent plan the city developed, most recent strategic plan the city developed, the the number one most vulnerable area of the city is Plum Island. So that's the reason why the the focus of the attention here. There are other areas of the city that are vulnerable, but it's the one that stands out so much, especially given the the fact that all the residents is out there on a vacuum system that can have to shut up whole segments of areas if there's a doom breach and damaged one of the systems. So so these things, I think, need to be kept in mind when we think about expansions on the island, whether or not more residents might be living there. If only because just as responsible stewards of the future, we are, you know, potentially participating in the process of encouraging more folks to be out there in essentially a hazard prone area, and we're not really sure as communities yet how we're going to mitigate those those flooding and addition issues to the extent that emergency services get out there. The cars that are actually parked underneath the homes can stay there during, you know, more frequent storms and inundations. We need to think about through these things. So it's just important context for you to have whatever decisions you make. But I would suggest at least trying to look at the maps that they present. I'm not sure how they'll be presenting the fiscal information. I'm not sure how thorough all that will be and then what sort of they will provide the full framework, but at least the the maps will help to illustrate the the seal rise issues. And then at that point, both the town of Newbury, who initiated the project and the city of Newbury Port can decide what to do with that, whether or not to make any regular trade changes or whether or not to do any capital projects to raise the turnpike or, you know, try to do some sort of barriers to protect homes that are out there, that sort of thing.
Right, okay, thanks.
All right, I had one thing, Andy, this is by Shagnon. If the city council were to choose to leave the existing ordinances in place with no changes, isn't it a lot to ask this board to now become the gatekeeper for growth on that island? I I mean, you could argue legally that making decisions against the way the ordinances are currently written is capricious, probably wouldn't stand up in court. It 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 seems to me that we're going about this the wrong way. Either the city council thinks this is an important issue and changes the ordinances to support it? Or it's not?
Yeah, but I I don't know. You're aware that the council didn't move ahead with the ordinance amendment, and that's obviously because it sort of became a hot potato. But, you know, to be clear, the if you've read the existing ordinance, it's pretty clear that the ordinance was written to encourage limits on growth in the island. So I wouldn't say that it's arbitrary or capricious for the board to come to a conclusion, not on every application, but certainly on some of them, that the expansions might be detrimental to the district by allowing an expansion. I don't I don't think it's unreasonable for the board to come to that conclusion based on existing ordinance, never mind any amendment to it. That's up to the board. If the board decides that it's not detrimental, that decision stands. That's the board's call. But I don't think it's unreasonable at all to come to that conclusion on the existing ordinance, never mind other ones. Because again, the ordinance was not written merely to allow people to apply to the ZBA to do these things, but also to ask, you know, the the board to have some discretion in looking at that and for the communities, both communities, because both communities were required under the administrative consent order to adopt these regulations locally and Wells Regulations covering some similar ground. That the idea was that through this process, there would be limits on the growth that was allowed on the island. That's exactly why these ordinances were put in place. So the fact that others might characterize it as, you know, the the status quo is fine or that the I know any proposal to this, you know, might not be, it's, I guess I would put it this way, the existing ordinance already speaks to purposes, if you read the purposes section of controlling the detrimental effects of growth on the island. So I don't think it's it's that's I don't think that's an unanswered policy question of the city council. That's really already on the books, I would argue.
Existing ordinances do allow for growth.
Can I make a comment? This is Ken Swanton.
Really?
Yeah, I mean, if the city council changes the ordinances, fine. I mean, that's their right. But the way they're written right now, we are the ones who have to decide how much growth is substantially more detrimental to the pie out. And that's the way it's written, and I think Andy has given us some good context tonight of the study that's being looked at that we can think about as we're applying that standard. But, you know, at the end of the day, we're the ones who decide, you know, whether a big expansion is a big expansion or not, or whether going over the far is a problem or not. And it's, that's the way it's written, and that's what we're focused with here today. And I appreciate Andy sharing the study that's going on on the issues that are out there. And if the city council does something, fine. But if they don't, then we keep going where we are, which is they've given us a set of ordinances. And we have, we have to decide what's substantially more detrimental, what kind of projects are substantially, that's what the decisions we're making constantly.
Agreed.
I agree with I agree with with Ken on that as well. And and I just comment that, you know, the whole notion of the existence of our board as an appellate body, we're an appellate administrative board. Obviously, we're not a court, though sometimes we feel like it for sure, because we're asked to to make such, you know, sort of slack, we're asked to make decisions, you know, on, you know, on at the moment and on site, you know, sort of like at the moment decisions that are fairly thoughtful and incredibly technical and oftentimes well beyond sort of the what what could be, what should be reasonably asked of any, you know, volunteer member of any of any board, you know, the these are tough choices even for, you know, lawyers and judges, which is why we have, you know, which is why we have courts to kind of arbitrate and litigate these, you know, these disputes when they come up. But I think as our board functions, we make exceptions to the rules. That's the whole notion of our board. That's how we exist. We are an appellate body, so that means we we have the authority to to grant, to apply discretion, to run it through the lens of the circumstances, and every single thing that we touch is a case by case first impression. You know, we don't set precedent because we don't have the capacity to set precedent. Everything we touch is bespoke, it's handcrafted from the ground up, and it's it's it applies only to the thing we're applying it to. So I think that unless and until, and I agree with, you know, my colleagues on this that have spoken, unless and until the 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 council should should promulgate and actually codify a change to the ordinance, which is their political mantle to bear, right? Not ours. They're the elected bodies, and they have a constituents. They have a constituency to to, you know, to have to to have to deal with, you know, in in, you know, in all the decisions they make and as representative voices at the at the council for, you know, for their wards and for the city at large. So so that's their, you know, that's their toil. That's their mantle. For for us, we're an administrative body, appointed and volunteer. Our job is to to bring to bear our disparate expertise, experience, background and training and and try to, in the alchemy of all of that, come up with, you know, a fair and balanced and thoughtful decision using the tools we have. And unless and until the tools are changed, those are the tools we have. And the tools, you know, the biggest hammer in our box is is discretion and our common sense. And I think, you know, that's what we apply against the resistance of the, you know, of the the ordinance itself. And we, you know, we seek to make exceptions when they're appropriate to be made. And and I think that's what we continue to do unless the council changes it. And there's a lot of, you know, there's a lot of politic involved in these ordinances, both seventy one and sixty nine, and I think seventy one was was withdrawn. And I and I am not sure whether sixty nine has yet been received and filed. But, you know, it may come back at any moment in some version or the identical same version. But, you know, we as a board, we can only, you know, we can only work with that which we have. So I think, you know, Plum Island is already a restricted zone. It's it's a it's a resource area and a very fragile one. And I think we all know that, and we try to bring special consideration to all of the applications that we see in the pie out, and I think we would continue to. And I think we all know that and we try to bring special consideration to all of the applications that we see in the pie out, and I think we would continue to. Um, I've got a lot of confidence in all of us, um, you know, that that's sort of the special treatment we give to um, Plum Island applications. But um, you know, I, I think that we have to sit and wait and see how this bears out. To be honest, Andy, and I, and I know that there's a lot of, you know, moving parts at the moment. Uh, and I give a lot of credit to the planning office and all of its toil and all of this is just, I can't even imagine the amount of work and detail that goes into it. But we're in a tough spot as a board because we're, we're asked to do so much with so little. So I, I think we have to continue to do our best. You know, um, sort of honorable work with what we have. And then less and until that changes, I don't know how we do much differently. What, what does everyone else think?
Yeah, just Robin, others, just to be clear, I don't know what anyone thought this discussion tonight was about. I just wanted to make sure you're aware of the upcoming maps. I. We're still going to have occasionally similar comments in our staff reports where we think a project might be uh, of a scale that. It's out of proportion and potentially detrimental to the district. We still recognize that that's the board's call. We don't object to that. That is, as you pointed out, the board's call. Um, and we don't expect this, the ZBA to take the role of the city council. Rob's correct. That's the, the city council's cross to pair of, of whether or not to change any land use policies uh, in the ordinances. Uh, I'm just pointing out that that's a, it's a fair discussion to have about an issue like this as a land use matter. Um, for them to have as a policy issue relative to the, the ordinance itself and for you to look at, uh, as you're looking at these individual applications. You'll have to decide what to do with those and we respect your decision on those applications. Um, we're not suggesting that, that something changed there. We're just saying that. Uh, expect to see sometimes those comments from us. We won't give them. We're gonna be, try to be selective and make sure we're not providing that, that sort of comment on something that's a minor nature. Um, but something that might be a substantial expansion, um, essentially in a hazard, in a hazard prone zone. Um, or area, that's something we feel like we need to at least bring to your attention. So you have the, the um, as part of your due diligence in making a decision, you, you have that information. Ultimately speaking. Uh, it is your decision and you're right, you have the current ordinance to work with.
I, I, I mean, I thank you for that, Andy, and I don't think, I, I certainly don't have any misunderstanding about the purpose of, you know, of these comments. I think you guys do a great job. I would. I would be remiss, and I'm sure I'm not alone in this among my colleagues, if we didn't have, you know, the, the detail and the thoughtful detail at that of the staff reports. That we get and, and, and that includes, you know, uh, commentary on your thoughts and uh, your comments that you want us to, you know, bring to bear when it comes to Plum Island. Uh, because it's such a, you know, such a sort of a special exception. It's a, you know, a fragile resource area that, you know, that bears additional consideration, special consideration. So. Please don't stop doing any of that. Um, and you know, and I wanna, I, I know we've gone kind of long this evening, so I want to try to wrap this up. Um, and I want to thank you. For taking the time to kind of inform our board on, you know, on sort of the latest developments when it comes to Plum Island. I, I know that all members of the ZBA are probably very tired and I know you guys. Caitlin and Andy, I'm sure you guys do this more nights than we do for sure. So, so thank you for taking the time and. Um, and let's just, you know, put a pin in it for the moment and we will, you know, we will, we, we will um. Be uh, be eager to sort of hear more from you guys in guidance to us as a board on, on developments and things that we should be considering. You know, and if something are, you know, something's to change, we'll, we'll hope that if we don't already know that you'll be the first to tell us.
Yeah, I think that was, I mean, I just think it was a great jump off point for really substantive, substantive discussion, probably one of the best discussions we've had as a group. So.
Yeah.
About important issues. So I, I, that was great and uh, and we can. Wrap it up.
Yeah, I, I agree, Mark. And um, and you know, Andy and Caitlin, thank you guys for, for sticking it out for us. And um, were there any other comments from any other members of the board before we uh, we adjourned? All right, seeing no hands, I um, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move you adjourn, Ken Swanton.
Haha, that was pretty fast. Ken, Ken, Ken's already logged off. So motion made by Mr. Swanton and seconded by.
Mr. Moore.
Mr. Moore. All right. Um, so uh, motion's made to adjourn, uh, Mr. Moore.
Yes.
Mr. Lyle.
Yes.
Mr. Swanton.
Yes.
Mr. Shannon.
Yes.
Mr. Bennet.
Yes.
Rob Champetti, I vote yes. And uh, the uh, that's six in the affirmative. We, the eyes have it. We are adjourned. Thank you, um, Gretchen Joy for all of your work and uh, Caitlin. And Andy, thank you. And uh, members of ZBA, thank you guys for your patience tonight. Have, have a great night.
Thank you all.
See you in two weeks.
Have a good night, everybody.
Thank you.
Good night.
Bye bye.